Good evening and welcome to the June 6, 2024 Meeting of the Bloomington Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the City Council. Tonight, we have seven, which is a quorum. The Commission advises the City Council on development proposals, development standards, long-range planning, and transportation issues. Our work is informed by the city's comprehensive plan, various district plans, and the city code. For some items, the Planning Commission makes a recommendation with the City Council having final decision-making authority. There are two such items on tonight's agenda. In other cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application subject to an appeal to the City Council. We have two of those types of items tonight. For each action item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, and then time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item on the agenda tonight is a request for a conditional use permit for a rooftop patio at an existing restaurant with revisions to final development plans. And Planner O'Day has the presentation.
I do. Thank you, Chair and Commission members. Yeah, so the first item on tonight's agenda is for a conditional use permit and major revision to final development plan for Full-Tilt Tavern. So Full-Tilt Tavern is located at 8301 Normandale Boulevard. Surrounding land uses are to the north, there are apartments; to the east, an office tower; to the south, an existing gas station; and then to the west is the Normandale Office Park. So Full-Tilt Tavern has changed, this building has changed hands over time. Currently, it's Full-Tilt Tavern, and they have 113 indoor seats and 100 outdoor seats. Couple photos looking directly at the building entrance on the left, and then on the right-hand side, you can see the existing outdoor patio. So a couple of notes about land use for this application. Restaurants are permitted use in the B4 zoning district. However, when you associate an outdoor patio, that does require a conditional use permit. And then, as well as their building addition, does require a major revision to final development plans. So getting into what they're proposing, they're proposing a total of 2,900 square foot total building addition, and that comprises of a 2,600 square foot addition on the southwest side of the existing building, a two-level slide just south of the building addition, and then a 288 square foot cooler addition located to the north, and then a 65 square foot elevator and staircase addition. And then, this shaded, green shaded area kind of covers what the rooftop area will be. And so it covers kind of the western half of the building. So the images that I have on the screen in the north is the aerial with kind of the yellow squares outlining the addition area. And then on the south, or the bottom image on my screen, is their civil site plan. Getting into the floor plans, the ground level would include 70 seats, games, and the perimeter would be outlined with folding windows that can be partially or fully opened. The cooler would be for employees only and would be accessed from within the building. And then the elevator and staircase would be added, of course, and then the remaining floor area would be unchanged. And then getting into the rooftop floor plan, like I said earlier, it's covering the western half of the existing building, and they're showing 156 new seats. A pergola would cover the bar area, and then, of course, the two-level slide would take patrons from the rooftop to the ground floor. So here are a couple of building renderings. On the top-left is the western elevation, and then the bottom-left is the south elevation. And what they're proposing is a mix of primarily glass, which is a benefit because the B4 zoning district does have specific structure design standards. So the, the building materials are compliant with our B4 standards. And then on the right, right side of my screen is the building rendering to give you an idea of what they're proposing. So getting into the requested deviations, so in 2008, the city, excuse me, proactively rezoned the site from B2 to B4. And so the B4 zoning district has a .2 FAR. So currently, what they're having is .11, and with the building additions, they're showing .13. Just to note that the rooftop area does not, is not calculated into the floor area because it's not a fully enclosed finished area. Staff is supportive of the development flexibility because it does provide a public benefit. It complies with the Normandale Lake District Plan. It's more in line with the before intent than present day. And it does provide additional foot traffic and activity to a very prominent section of Bloomington. And then another request for deviation that they're requesting, the B4 zoning district has a minimum 10-foot building setback and a maximum 40-foot building setback along streets. And so the addition would bring it closer to 46 feet from the property line along Normandale Service Road. And we are supportive of this request for deviations, as previously mentioned. So getting into noise, outdoor patios obviously have sound, and so this outdoor patio must meet our noise standards. And so at the nearest residential receiver, which is to the north, the outdoor patio must not exceed during daytime hours, a DBA level of 60 and then 65 for the L10 noise level. And then during nighttime hours, because they are proposing to be open past 10:00 PM, so these noise standards would apply. So the noise level can exceed 50 DBA and then 55 DBA for the L50 and L10 levels. And so staff is proposing a noise condition that was printed in the packet. And we do have a previous rooftop patio that was approved a number of years ago. And so with that application, we had approved or attached the condition related to noise. And so staff is recommending the same condition for that previous rooftop patio CUP and applying it to this proposed patio as well. And then, the applicant has expressed concern about this noise-related condition. And so to address this concern, staff is recommending this modified condition for your reference. And basically, what it addresses is, it addresses complaints from three separate parties instead of the previous condition that could create the same person complaining three times. And then, kind of a more stringent condition gets at verified noise complaints. So this condition would involve a completion of a noise study. And if there were violations, then they would have to mitigate noise under A and B. And so these conditions are for your feedback, and staff is looking for guidance, but ultimately is recommending the condition that we had provided in the packet. And then just a couple miscellaneous items with the previous CUP for this property. There was a CUP for indoor entertainment and recreation due to their games on-site. And so that previous CUP required a sidewalk connection to be installed from the building entrance to the public sidewalk. An inspection verified that that has not been completed. And so we are recommending a condition that they install that sidewalk. And their lighting is, is compliant today, and so that just must be maintained. And then lastly, a liquor license must be approved by City Council prior to opening. And so with that, we are recommending approval. And I believe the staff, or the applicant, excuse me, is in attendance tonight for any questions.
Thanks for that. Could you refresh for the Commission's memory? I know we had quite a bit of discussion about the other property that was referenced, which I believe is the Willie McCoy's property with those conditions. Because there were similar concerns at the time. How have those conditions played out over the last six, seven, eight years they've been there?
Chair, yeah, so we were able to ask our environmental health staff if there have been complaints, and there were complaints early on back in 2016. And Willie McCoy's has been able to address some of those noise concerns by putting up like a sound, a sound wall that mitigated noise to the neighbors. But since then, we haven't received any complaint.
Not since they took the mitigation?
Correct, correct, yep.
Okay, thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. My question is related to the floor area ratio. I'm just questioning, if you had added the rooftop, where would we be at for floor area ratio?
Chair, Commissioner Albrecht, if we included the rooftop area, it would still be below the .2. So they would still need a request for deviation if we included that area.
Significantly below, or?
I don't know, significantly below, close to .2, but still below.
Thank you.
Yep.
Question, other questions for staff? Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Day, can you remind me where we're at with landscaping on this, on this site?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioner Cookden. I do have the landscape plan. They are showing a compliant number of, they're required to have one tree per 2,500 square feet of disturbance error, so they're, they're meeting the tree quantity. In addition, they have to replant what has been deceased or missing over time. And so they do have to kind of do an inventory of what's on-site with the approved landscaping plan and just replant what has maybe died over time or have been taken out.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. O'Day, can you talk a little bit about signage plan for this property? I know that there's a large mural on the side of the building today, and it looks like that would be changing.
Commissioner, or Chair Commissioner Goldsman, I'm not aware of any signage plan. I know that with this application, they're not changing kind of the name or anything. I guess I would defer to the applicant for any signage-related questions. Thank you.
Any other question? Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Is there a city code that covers a slide like this? Like, we're talking about a kind of second-story patio where I assume people will be drinking and hanging out at night. So not sure if the slide is something that we need to be concerned about.
Chair, Commissioner Curry, no, our code doesn't specifically address the slide. They will have stanchions, I'm not sure if I'm saying that word right, but at the top and below where people get off. But maybe I can have the applicant address kind of how they're going to address safety and other things.
Thank you.
I have that same question. It appears to be an open-air slide, not a enclosed slide.
Yeah.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the sake, I guess, of the record, what's the, what is the general cost of a noise study? What would that cost, the applicant? Do you have any idea?
I do not have any estimate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak on this item?
Maybe your timing, fracture your foot, that's for sure. My name is Mike Tupin, I'm the proprietor of Full-Tilt Tavern.
If you could pull the mic to your, so the people on the video can hear you.
Okay, I'm Mike Tupin, I'm the proprietor of Full-Tilt Tavern. And so slide is definitely on my mind. I've spoke with my insurance agent, and we kind of talked through the idea of putting in an enclosed slide, you know, versus the open slide, because we think it would probably benefit us. Just an additional safeguard. So it's something we're putting consideration into, and we'll most likely wind up doing. And the signage, there's no change in signage.
Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I'll just stick on the slide for a second here. If someone is going down the slide and then just decides to stop, how would someone know at the top before they go down? I'm just thinking like at a water park, for example, there's usually a lifeguard or something, making sure that someone comes out of the slide.
Right, yeah. At this point, I haven't thought through actually manning, you know, a staff member there.
Sure.
I view it, I mean, no different than going to a playground, I suppose. There's no one manning a slide.
Sure, thank you.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Okay.
This item is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item. We have a number of people online. I don't know if any of them are here for this item.
Yeah, Chair Roman, everybody online is either for other items or staff members.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one online and no one in the chambers to speak on this item, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries, the public hearing is closed. Discussion on this item? I think my only observation is the one that Commissioner Curry raised. I would, I think the slide is an interesting idea. I'm not terribly concerned about the, you know, the red light, green light part of it. But I do think enclosed, given the nature of what we expect many of the patrons will be doing at this establishment, I do support, and I don't know if it needs to be a condition necessarily. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't. But I think an enclosed slide is probably a good idea. Beyond that, I think the floor area ratio with, I know we don't consider the rooftop patio, but this whole area like B4 where we want up, we want height, I think. And given that we, we know that people in the city like outdoor patio dining, I think getting that closer to .2 with that, I feel good about. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding the slide, I actually had the opposite thought about the slide being an open slide so you could see who's going down and making sure they're going down versus a closed slide. So I think leave it to the experts and probably your insurance agent, what is, what is appropriate. I'm also in support of that. I think, like Chair Roman said, the, getting that FAR closer to .2, I really supportive of that. I think that rooftop is considered usable space and probably highly used space in that area, given the number of people who work and also live along that corridor. The other thing that I had to say about this side is, I think the design is really well-done, keeping the patio on the southern and the western side more towards the office rather than the residential. So I appreciate the forward-thinking in that, and I am in support.
Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, we were asked to look at a few things with this. So with the floor area ratio, I too am supportive. I think we're getting closer. And when you, when you back calculate the math as to what it would take to be a .2, you'd have to like double the size of this establishment, which is not economically feasible, I imagine. So I don't have an issue with that. The side yard setback, we were also asked to look at. Again, I think it would be impractical. It's kind of a funky-shaped lot, it's a very unique site. I think trying to meet code by pushing that building another six feet is impractical. And I think we can take a practical look at this and say, that's just fine, what they're proposing. And the modified condition they've put before us with the complaints, it seemed reasonable to me. So I don't have any problems with that. So my overall thoughts are it's a, it's a good expansion to a good local business. You know, we don't have a ton of local restaurants in Bloomington necessarily. And I'm happy to see this one being successful and expanding, and I'm in support of it.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I would echo what Commissioner Cookden said about the FAR setbacks. I also look at this as a local company that's helping support amenities for our families, places that we can bring our kids and have a dinner and have some fun in a safe and controlled environment. I'm excited to see this expansion. Obviously, this location has gone through many different names and hats, and it's just nice to see it being successful enough that they want to expand. I hope they take reservations for summer fete so we can watch our fireworks. So I'll be supportive.
I was realizing that one of the questions that Planner O'Day asked us was about the two different approaches to the conditions. One was the conditions that were very similar to what was at Willie McCoy's, and the other one was the one that would require a noise study. And so I don't know, I think they were hoping to get some direction from us. I lean toward the conditions that are similar to Willie McCoy's. They've shown to be effective and did lead to modifications when there was an impact on the residential nearby. But I don't know if others have thoughts. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I would agree. I think the Willie McCoy's conditions have been effective, I'd go that direction. Generally, I'm supportive. I don't know how to manage a slide. I guess I'd leave that up to the proprietor. And just glad to see someone investing in the, in the site because it has turned over a number of times, and good to see, you know, some more money being put into it.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I think I see the applicant's point of if you have three or more complaints, it's pretty ambiguous if we have three of the same person calling. That really opens the door for maybe someone to call that three times, and the fourth time, you're out. So I'm supportive of the change, but I also struggle with inconsistencies in our applications. And so I don't know how to rectify that, if there's a way that we can somehow administratively make that comment. I don't know, I just, I don't want to change it for one, but not for the other. If that makes sense.
Commissioner Cookden.
Commissioner Goldsman, if I may, perhaps we, you could view it as an improvement on what we're doing. So if we stay the same all the time, that's not so good either, right? So I, I look at this as more of an improvement than, uh, we're doing this for somebody, we're doing this for somebody else.
I would hope that, I'm fine with the revision. I would hope that in the spirit of being a good neighbor, even if there was one who had a problem more than once, that there would be an opportunity to make some improvements. Because again, I think the improvements that were made at Willie McCoy's were not terribly, they cost some money. They weren't terribly expensive, and they, they were effective. And so, while I appreciate there's a hard line, I think that whenever we can be good neighbors and appreciate the soft line, that's, that would be my hope. Other discussion or a motion? Commissioner McGovern.
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
In case PL 2024-50, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the City Council to adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for a rooftop patio at the existing restaurant subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend the City Council adopt a conditional use permit. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes? And anyone else? Commissioner Cookden.
Mr. Chair, in case PL 2024-50, I move to recommend the City Council approve a major revision to final development plans for an addition onto an existing restaurant, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to recommend a major revision to final development plans. Further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. This item will appear on the June 17 City Council Agenda in the Consent Agenda. The second item is another conditional use permit and final development plans for a new restaurant. And we have Planner O'Day as our restaurant expert tonight.
Thank you, Chair, Commissioner. Item two is an application by Pigate My Pizza. They are applying for a conditional use permit and final development plan. So getting to the property, this is at 10700 Bloomington Ferry Road. Surrounding land uses are to the north, there's a school; to the east, a church; and then to the south, there's the rest of Countryside Center and Dred Scott. And then to the west is the rest of Countryside Center and Single Family Residential. So here's a couple of photos of existing conditions. This is a 3,200 square foot former gas station, and Pigate My Pizza would occupy this entire building. So on the left-hand side of my screen is looking at the building entrance. And then to the back, standing on Landau Circle, looking at the back of the building. So getting into land use, very similar to the last application. Restaurants are permitted use in the B2 zoning district, and outdoor patios do require a CUP. And then the building addition that they're proposing does require a major revision to final development plan. So getting into what they're proposing, they're showing 75 indoor seats and then 1,300 square foot building addition, which is outlined in red on my screen. They will be having 72 outdoor seats. Sorry, missing a number there. 24 of them would be seasonal only. And then they're showing a play area just to the north of the patio. And then they will be constructing three additional parking stalls in the front of the building. So getting into the deviations that they're requesting, the B2 zoning district requires a 35-foot setback from the street, and Landau Circle is considered a street, even though it's a cul-de-sac. So what they're proposing is 25 and a half feet from the property line. And staff is comfortable with the request for deviation due to the reuse of the building. As a former gas station, they're adding more foot traffic and activity to a neighborhood commercial node. So overall, we are supportive of the building setback request. Getting into parking, we require kind of a list of, of all the existing uses at Countryside Center. And then I calculated the parking required for the entire center as a whole. And so what they're required is 212 spaces for the entire Countryside Center Shopping Center. And so what they're having today is 179 spaces, which includes the three that they're proposing to construct. They are showing a 30-stall proof-of-parking space area. And so with the proof-of-parking, the deviation is 2.5% from city code. And then staff is, is comfortable with that level of deviation. And then lastly, this parcel is separate from the larger Countryside Center. And so should it sell off to a separate owner in the future, we're requiring the owner to file a shared parking agreement that just covers maintenance, how parking will be shared if there are two property owners in the future. there are two property owners in the future. Just getting into landscaping, overall, they're showing a compliant number of landscaping material, a couple revisions to parking lot islands are missing trees, so they do have to show that, and then as well as foundation plantings along the northern building edge of the addition, and then patio screening has been provided along the north and east And then similar with the last application, the outdoor patio must meet noise, and liquor license must be approved by city council prior to opening. And with that, we are recommending approval, and the applicant and architect are online for questions.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. One question I have is around the play area that's proposed, can you talk a little bit about how that'll be screened or fenced for safety?
Sorry, you said screened?
Screened or fenced, yes, for safety.
Yep. Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, so they are showing kind of vegetation around the area, I'm not sure if there will be a fence, I guess I'll have to defer to the applicant if there'll be a fence around the area.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner McGovern.
Being that it's a former gas station, is the existing underground tanks still there?
Chair, Commissioner McGovern, I believe they are not there, I drove by a couple weeks ago and I did not see them, so I think they are gone, but I'll defer to the applicant for verification.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I think Commissioner McGovern brings up an interesting point, has this lot ever been cleaned up, is like a brownfield?
Chair, Commissioner Cookton, I'm not aware of any cleanup activity happening on the site.
Very well.
Other questions for staff? For, this is more of an educational question, but, you know, when the applicant originally brought this, and there was the parking deviation, and then there was some additional spots constructed, given that to the north, but it's across the cul-de-sac, there is a church which has a lot of parking which sees very little use, could the applicant have chosen to do a shared parking agreement with a property that's across a street?
Chair, Commissioner, Chair, yeah, I suppose they could have a shared parking agreement if that property agreed to it.
Just curious, we've had multiple conversations in this body about right sizing parking, there are some times when we need more, but there are a lot of times where we have too much, and so it's just mostly a curiosity question. Commissioner McGovern.
Piggybacking on what you're saying, could the school parking lot also be an alternative, being that you don't have to cross the road, and it's in the same area as the restaurant?
I think in general, what we heard was that it can be, if they chose to do that.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Seeing none, would the applicant like to speak on this item? I think we're going to pop him online. One second here while we get him loaded up.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Fabulous, I just wanted to respond to the few questions that were deferred to us. We are not currently showing a fence around the play area, but we are intending that there would be a rather thick vegetative edge to that, and then the tanks, from the fuel tanks have been removed, and we have documentation of an all-clear to move forward, seeing as the soil is cleaned, to the best of my knowledge.
Other questions for the applicant? Thank you very much. This item is a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone in the chambers who would like to speak on this item. Same situation online? All right. Seeing that there is no one in the chambers and no one online, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, the public hearing is closed. Discussion on the application? Commissioner Cookton? Oh, sorry, Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am in full support of this, I think again, as we mentioned in the last application, having an additional restaurant and a place for families together is always a good thing for the city of Bloomington. I also think a reuse of a gas station is also a really great thing, since those are a hard thing to figure out what to do with afterwards. And I appreciate the well-thought-out design of the patio and also a location for kids, because there are, we are in need of places for children in the city, so I'm in support.
Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of comments that I wrote down here, I completely agree with the reuse of this underutilized space, and the applicant being flexible in making it a vibrant place for our families. To the application, looking at the existing conditions, I'm okay with the setback deviation that's been requested. I am fully supportive of the deviation parking, even the, you know, I think we're overparked in that area, there's a lot of area right now for cars, thinking about as a neighborhood commercial node, I'm hopeful that residents can walk to this restaurant and not even need to drive, as well as there's a large bike trail that's very close by as well as the baseball diamonds, so I think it's a great place for people to walk to versus drive. And then I would just say, from a patio perspective, I would be supportive of the same conditions that we just talked about for the other application, for noise, to be applied to this one as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I guess I also apologize, I didn't really get into the, think about the noise thing so much until this moment, so I don't know how much that's been considered, but I guess I would consider, you know, think that's something that maybe we should look at here. I do, you know, there's less outdoor seating, I suppose, at this site versus full tilt, but I think it's also much closer to neighborhoods than the busy Normandale and 84th intersection, I think it's 84th. So, I mean, I recognize, you know, some of the letters that have been written in, and folks concerned about noise and drivers in the area, I'm not so concerned about drivers given the exit, or the, you know, the exit from the property back onto Bloomington and West Old Shakopee Road, but noise might be a concern.
Planner O'Day, do you know what the distance is from the proposed patio to the nearest residential? I think it's a fair distance.
I do.
I suspected you might.
So a couple of different aspects from this application, you have the building kind of shielding from, at least to the west, it's also ground level, so it's not up on a rooftop, so it's not at the same level as full tilt. Also their hours, they're planning on closing at 10:00 PM, they're not full tilt, they're planning on opening till, or closing, sorry, at 2:00 AM, and so this has kind of an earlier closure, so a couple different aspects from this application.
Yeah, I think the, Commissioner Curry pointed about some of the public comment we received about the bike trail potential and establishment that involves alcohol, we already have that in this center, I've been there a number of times, I've not, at different times of day, and I've never, I mean, any place can have that, any place that serves people has the potential to over-serve and have issues, but I think that I've not, again, we've got, we've got that already there, and I don't know that that's the responsibility of this body to govern that, I think the 300 feet is actually closer than I thought it might be, and so I don't know, to the question about noise standards, what that looks like. Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I think the piece that was by swaying, or two things, is obviously the height of the patio makes a big difference, and then I think their closure at 10:00 PM has been that that was really what, when the threshold for the other noise kicked in, so I'm okay with it as proposed, as long as it's at that location, and also with
Those hours.
Those hours.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Day, for our conditions, is this a conditional use permit? Okay, so for our conditions of approval, is it the same conditions we were using for full tilt regarding the complaints?
No, so the complaint, the three complaint is not Pigate My Pizza application.
Okay.
But they are required to comply with noise at all times, and that is a condition on their application, just not the three complaint.
How did staff determine, arrive at that determination of making that difference?
Due to the hours of operation, this is slightly further away from residential, and then the kind of grade difference between like the rooftop patio being more kind of up higher, sound travels, and this is just at grade, so we didn't feel that it was necessary to have the three complaint condition on this application.
Okay, thank you. Can I keep going? Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I don't know, I could be swayed either way, that is some inconsistency there, and if we're going to be inconsistent, I think we should have rules for inconsistency, okay, 300 feet and above you, something like that, I don't know, I'm a little uncomfortable with the inconsistency there, although I do understand why staff is, has different conditions on this application. Aside from the noise, my overall sort of thoughts here are, I think it's a huge win for this neighborhood, you know, this is one of the less well-known areas of Bloomington, it's not an area I find myself in very often, and I think this is going to be a regional draw, I think this is more than just a local spot, I think we're going to see people from other cities coming here, and I'm a little surprised to see it going here, actually, I would expect a regional draw like this to go to some other neighborhoods, and I think it proves that some of our other areas in the city that refuse to add in retail spaces is ridiculous, there are people that want to come here and could go into other neighborhoods, and I think people should take notice of that. So I think it's terrific for this neighborhood, I think they're going to see a lot of folks coming in, I think it's going to be very successful, and I'm supportive of it.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I guess I just noticed on the patio, it does look like there is a six-foot-high privacy fence on the east side of the property, and then a three-foot-high cedar privacy fence on the north side of the patio, so, yeah, again, I don't know about the inconsistency, but given the smaller patio, the time of day, and the cedar fence, maybe it's, you know, not as big of a deal, and see if, see how things go.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Ms. O'Day, the condition that we used in the last application, that condition was specific to after 10:00 PM, I just want to be clear about that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, then, that being said, I am comfortable, since it's supposed to be closing at 10:00 PM, with not using the similar condition, and being okay with traditional noise code that we have already.
Any other discussion? Or a motion? Commissioner Goldsman.
If I could make a motion.
In a moment, you may.
Thank you.
There we are.
Perfect, thank you. In case PL 2024-61, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend city council adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for an outdoor patio at a new restaurant at 10700 Bloomington Ferry Road, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second to recommend city council approve a conditional use permit. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Chair. In case PL 2024-61, I move to recommend city council approve a major revision to final development plans for an addition onto a new restaurant at 10700 Bloomington Ferry Road, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion in a second to recommend major revision to final development plans. Further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. These items will also appear on the June 17th city council meeting in the consent agenda.
All right, item number three is a public hearing on final site and building plans for stadium improvements, site improvements at Kennedy High School. Before we begin, I want to let anyone know who did not hear ahead of time, there is a sign-in sheet over at the table by the entrance for anyone who would like to speak on this item or the next item, we will be calling folks through the list in order to have accurate information for the role. When we do get to public testimony, we have our shot clock, which everyone who would like to give testimony has the opportunity to testify for three minutes. I'd ask that people respect the time limit, I get that this is a big issue, there's strong perspectives, passions on both sides, and I want to make sure that we give everyone who would like to be heard the opportunity to be heard. And so I don't know, do we have anything before we launch into this with senior planner sentinario? Okay, the floor is yours of the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Next on our agenda is final site and building plans for the Kennedy High School Athletic Stadium on Nicollet Avenue. Oh, am I not sharing, I'm sorry. There we go, great. And it's been a little bit of a journey so far. The school district originally applied last September, we had a couple continuances to November 2nd, and then it was continued to November 30th, and then on November 30th, it was indefinitely continued to allow the school district some time to prepare a sound study or a noise study. And we were bringing the item back to the May 9th planning commission meeting, but then on the 7th, we received notification from the Minnesota Environmental Quality Board, or EQB, that a petition was received, and that petition, essentially petitioned the city to require an environmental assessment worksheet, or EAW. So the commission wasn't able to take action on the 9th, we had to wait for the city council to make their determination on whether or not an EAW was required. Well, the council did that on Monday night, and they made the determination that an EAW was not required for the stadium project, and so here we are tonight. For the, for all the folks who regularly watch the planning commission meetings, you may have heard us talk about the discretion pyramid, I think it is relevant in this, for this application, and so, you know, as you get higher on the pyramid, you have a lower amount of discretion, as you get lower on the pyramid, you have a higher amount of discretion. You know, at the top, you have permits, which is strictly a ministerial action, if you are meeting city code requirements, we are obligated to approve it. Right below that are site plans, which is what you're reviewing tonight, where there is, there is lower discretion, and so we're really looking at the findings that are required for final site and building plans, which relate directly to city code. And so here are the findings, and so in order for the planning commission to consider approving a site plan application, the commission has to make these findings, and I highlighted the, a portion of the finding that I think is at issue with a lot of folks related to this application, and that it's not injurious to the surrounding neighborhood. You know, a lot of these words can be subjective, but there is a distinction between injurious and inconvenient, or less than ideal, injurious is really harm, so just keep that in mind as you consider the testimony that you're going to hear and before you vote. So touching on existing conditions at Kennedy, here's an image of the campus, outlined in red is the existing athletic stadium, it has, it has artificial turf today and a track, and that would be retained, I think the school district wants to change the turf, but it would remain artificial, no changes to the track, and then really, most of the campus would stay the same. I'll zoom in a little bit, but here's a site plan, and it identifies some physical changes, it's, it's not very clear, but I'll get into that in a moment. So this kind of zooms into the stadium area, you can see the actual bleachers in this space on the west side of the field, there is not enough space on the east side of the field to accommodate any bleachers, so the entirety is on the west. west. And then, some, some parking would be removed near the entrance to accommodate some pedestrian movements, which is something that staff was happy to see. You know, certainly there's gonna be buses dropping off athletes and certain spectators, and so, they just needed the space to do that. So, some of the parking was, is replaced with a concrete And talking about parking, you know, we calculate parking as one-third of the occupancy, and for a stadium with, at a total occupancy of 2,500, that makes the parking requirement 833, 833. Well, there isn't 833 stalls in the Kennedy campus, however, we do have a mechanism called proof of parking, where a property owner is able to demonstrate that they could meet the code, but doesn't necessarily have to build the parking. And that's what we're proposing, or the school district's proposing here. You know, obviously, parking lots are very costly, they've, they do have, you know, some environmental impact, and so, the school district, if approved, wouldn't necessarily construct this parking lot, if it turned out to be that the parking on site was sufficient. And staff is supportive of that, of that method. We have an elevation of the bleachers themselves, you know, the, since Kennedy, the, all of the seating is on one side of the field, it's a little bit longer, about 283 feet, with a press box on top. We did, of course, look at what the height limitations were, and we do have some height limitations in this area of the city, and that's 40 feet. What they're proposing to the top of the press box is about 30 and a half feet, so we are in compliance in terms of total height. And here we have all the, I just mentioned, just sort of talked about this, the the parking on site, you know, we have a variety of parking areas, you know, the Pond Center is immediately to the north and has a nice walkway to the, between, you know, you walk past the tennis courts to the stadium area. And so, the school district believes that this is more than sufficient parking to meet the need of the new stadium. Nonetheless, we still have to address the code requirement, and that's why the proof of parking was identified. And there's also some street parking available, certainly not on Nicollet or East 98th, but within the neighborhood, you know, at the time of a lacrosse or football or track meet, you know, these, these may be options for folks, we cannot count them towards the parking requirement, but nonetheless, we should, we should at least acknowledge that it is available off, you know, on, outside of school hours. Interesting that all the items on the agenda tonight had a noise component, it's not very common, but obviously, with the stadiums, it's, there's amplified sound, there's potentially marching band, there's crowd noise, noise is a, is a legitimate and significant concern for, for folks in in the community. And so, that's something that was, at the center of the review, was would the, would the noise that's generated from this use meet the city's limitations? And it's not just the city's limitations, it are actually the state's, which we have essentially mirrored in city code. And so, for, you know, we have these, these two, these two limits, L10 and L50, and it's a little, it's a little difficult to explain, but, you know, the, the L10 level is a sound level expressed in DBA, which has exceeded 10% of the time in a one-hour survey. And similarly, for the L50, it's a level which has exceeded 50% of the time for a one-hour survey. So, we are not, the standards do not relate to peak. So, if you think of an example of a football game, there's a big play, it gets really loud, that's gonna be a peak. So, it's obviously gonna be much louder than what the L10 and the L50 are, but that's not the L10 and the L50. So, there's this really important distinction. And so, one of the reasons for the delay initially was for the school district to find a sound engineer or sound acoustics firm to prepare a noise study. And they did so, and submitted their, their report, which is, including your packet, and what they found was, based on their modeling that they did, the stadium at Kennedy would be compliant with the noise standards for daytime, it would not be for nighttime. So, it's, it's pivotal that all activities end before 10:00 PM. The last graphic was the L10, this is the L50, and again, the, the properties that are most impacted are the properties on the east side of Third Avenue, but based on the sound, the acoustic firm model, it would be code complying for the L50 level. Probably the other major concern was related to lighting. And initially, the school district had a, you know, a very sophisticated lighting system that's used for, for athletic events, but it had what they called ball tracker, which had an uplit fixture that essentially lit up the sky for when balls are higher up in the air. Great idea, but not permitted in the city, 'cause it, it contributes to glare, light pollution, and it's not something that we, that we allow here. So, that was a significant concern, again, totally legitimate concern, the school district has removed those uplit fixtures, and so, now, the, in terms of the lighting fixtures themselves, they would be compliant. That's not the whole story, though, 'cause we also have to worry about what the lighting level is actually on the ground, not so much on the field surface. This is what's called a photometric plan, where the numbers on the field are the amount of light on the ground in a foot candle. And so, you obviously wanna have consistent, significant light on the field surface, but you don't wanna have any light across the street at someone's home. And so, that's something that we wanted to review, too. So, you can see the two, this F4 and F3, those are the light poles themselves, there's Third Avenue, and so, we have them include what the allow, or what the light is modeled to be, and with LED technology, this tends to be really accurate. And what they're showing is, again, code complying along the east side of Third Avenue. So, at the highest level anticipated is about 39, .39, the allowance is .5. You know, I'd love to work with the applicant to get that to almost zero, so we'll see what we can do, but what they are showing is compliant. And so, with that, we are recommending approval. We're not reviewing the EAW, that was something the council reviewed and determined on Monday, but we are reviewing the final site and building plans. And so, we do have conditions of approval, and staff is recommending approval.
Thank you for that. For general information, the .5 foot candle standard, what would the average person equate that amount of light to?
Chair, it, it's not much at all. I should've brought my light meter for, I wish I would've.
Left mine home, too.
I would say that the, the amount of the foot candles that are on the surface right now are probably 40, 50, even maybe even more than that. So, it's, it's imperceptible, frankly.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman?
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. One of the questions I had is, in our previous discussions on this topic, we talked about crosswalks. Can you talk a little bit about what plans there are with crosswalks from the neighborhoods, specifically looking at Old Shakopee, or some of the other surrounding neighborhoods, to make sure that if people are parking in the street, they can get to the stadium safely?
I'm wondering if we could have someone from our Public Works Department. Thank you, Julie. Engineer Long is with us.
Commissioner, Commissioners, Chair Commissioner, I'm apparently out of practice. With regard to crosswalks, we have received federal funding for a crosswalk across East Old Shakopee Road between Stevens and First, and we just got authorization from FHWA last week to bid the project. So, we're expecting to bid it at the end of June, and it would have an RRFB, one of those rapid flashing beacons, to assist the community in its use and crossing safely, and we're hoping all the students behind me take note, please use it to help cross safely, so.
And for point of reference, that's roughly under the E on East Old Shakopee Road up there?
Um, sure.
Roughly?
Depending on which E you're referring to.
The one that's been tasted on. East Old Shakopee, oh, oh, yeah. I'm a little slow tonight, the capital E.
Yeah, me too. Does that answer your question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Long, I have an additional question, apologies. I know, I think it was at a payment management or something along those lines, we talked about a crosswalk further east, kind of where that sidewalk ends, or the extension of that sidewalk, or something along those lines, for sake of information, would you provide what we talked about?
Sure. Chair, Commissioner Albrecht, you are remembering it correctly, we talked about it in relationships to the project I just mentioned, because as staff, we struggled to figure out where the best location to get the most compliance with this crosswalk would be. So, we had set up cameras to see what the actual behavior of the walkers were, and we found that while that that is where the sidewalk kind of ends, and now I'm quoting poetry, it's a beautiful poem, go read it, it isn't where people are actually crossing. So, and we felt that Third Avenue was close enough that most people, while they don't wanna be inconvenienced to walk out of their path, they would be willing to walk and cross at Third, and that's why we ended up in that weird space between First and Stevens.
Thank you.
Other questions for staff? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. Can you remind me, what are the speed limits going to be for these roads after the new speed plan is implemented?
Those are unchanged, 'cause it's a county road.
Correct.
Still be 35.
For Old Shakopee.
You're saying, it's a county road, so we don't have jurisdiction, but Third Avenue or Nicollet?
Um, Chair, Commissioner Curry, Nicollet is also a county road, north of Old Shakopee Road, south of Old Shakopee Road, it is a city road. I, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Roberts, but I believe that will be changing to 25, nope, apparently 30.
On a friend.
I don't have the map memorized, sorry.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, and I'm happy to talk about speed limits, as you roll those out. So, yeah, as noted, Nicollet Avenue and Old Shakopee Road are both under jurisdiction of Hennepin County, so the speed limits on those will stay the same until the county receives authorization from the state to start changing their own speed limits if they do. Third Avenue is a local street that will go to 25 miles an hour here in about 30 days, that will be unsigned, as with all the, the local streets. Nicollet Avenue, south of Old Shakopee, is a city road, that will be at 30 miles an hour as well. I think right now, it's currently at 35, that will go to 30 miles an hour.
So, okay, and then, I understand, my understanding is with the parking, the proof of parking is not actually being implemented, we are leveraging, if you will, neighboring streets for parking for the football stadium. Are there any other plans to modify, I don't know, striping or any sort of safety features, any sort of enhancements to the roads or the sidewalks besides the single crosswalk?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Curry, so, one of the nice things about these stadiums is that they are, they are operating, they're going into areas where we already have really good pedestrian amenities, lighting and things like that, because remember, they get about 3,000 cars in and out of here every day, all through the winter months, in those dark months. And so, most of the infrastructure to, to move people around is already there. We're adding the crosswalk, as City Engineer Long mentioned, and so, we'll continue to monitor the areas we do with all of our school areas and make those modifications as necessary. But with the addition of the stadiums, we're not aware of any new issues that will be created in terms of pedestrian circulation, vehicle circulation that we need to address at this time, but we'll continue to monitor that as we always do.
And to further enhance that response, with the speed limit work that Mr. Roberts and his team are undertaking, they are looking at initially starting three school zones. Kennedy is not one of our first three, but it is high on our list for future upcoming years. We're gonna keep knocking them off. So, in a few years, the school speed zone will be likely in this area.
Related to that, I know it's a little bit off-topic, but it's, could be relevant. Does the county have a process by which, where we can, by which, by, where we can ask them also to consider a school speed zone, because again, jurisdiction?
Mr. Chairman, it's a good question. We, the code language that the Planning Commission approved last month, and that went to council for approval, does authorize the city to establish school zone speed limits on county roads in cooperation with the county. There's certain provisions that we have to comply with, so they might not be the 20 mile an hour speed zones that we'll have in our other school areas, but yes, we will be establishing school zone speed limits on Old Shakopee Road and Nicollet Avenue.
Good. So, if we use the, there, I remember there were several options there, if we use the flashing beacon option, we may be able to activate that during an event like this?
We're waiting for legal to review that. The language that I reviewed in state law is, restricts it to school activities, what that includes will be a question for legal to sort out over time.
Thank you. Other questions for staff? Commissioner Curry?
Sorry, a couple of follow-ups on that. So, so then, I think I noted that in the plan, that there's non-concurrents, or won't have multiple events at the same time as part of a, or as a condition, and maybe this is a question for the applicant, but I think there was some discussion before about not hosting potentially regional events at the stadium, is that under consideration tonight, or?
Chair Commissioners, the, that's what was identified by the applicant, as staff, we're not proposing any conditions that tried to regulate that necessarily, and so, beyond the assurances of the school district?
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Okay, would the applicant like to speak on this item? Go ahead and introduce yourself, and then...
Hi, Paul Aplikowski with World Architects and Engineers, we've been helping the district with this application. We don't have any presentation, the Planning Commission has seen all of this before, with the exception of the sound report. I did wanna let you know that we have the sound engineer on, online, if you have questions for them, and I'll proact on that conversation a little bit. I know that I was here last year, talking about how we couldn't meet the sound requirements, and we actually intended, if you remember when we left, to go try to get a variance from the MPCA, and we were pleasantly surprised to find that when the sound engineer did their analysis, that we could come into compliance. We did modify the project and the speaker and the sound systems a little bit to make that work out, but we're confident now with this analysis that we're able to do that. So, with that, we'll just see if there's any questions.
Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Cookton?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. So, if I'm sort of understanding how you've gotten your noise to fit a little bit, you're basically focusing those speakers as such to hit the limit of where you can be. So, do you feel like your speaker system's going to be loud enough, or have you compromised your design to fit code?
Um, I, I think we're gonna make a system that works well for the district, and the part of the proposal is to have a limiter on the system to address any concerns that might come up in the future.
Other questions? Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, can you just give a high level of what are the changes in the sound system to support the compliance?
Um, I actually might defer to Kevin, he may know a little bit more about it than me, but it, there wasn't many. It's, the speakers are still located on the bleachers as they were before. At the Kennedy site, they're really on one side of the thing because of the, the bleachers are all on one side. And then, again, we are recommending that there be a limiting device put into the system so that it can be controlled if needed.
Kevin Patterson, to do any ad?
Can you all hear me okay? Kevin Patterson on the line?
Yes.
Chair Commissioners, yeah, I'll, I'll elaborate on that response a little bit. So, as Mr. Centenario pointed out, there are two noise code terms that he very eloquently defined for us, specifically regarding the L10 value, which is again, the sound level that is exceeded 10% of the time in a one-hour measurement, is sometimes referred to as a, don't define it as a maximum, 'cause it's not maximum, but sometimes is referred to as a louder sound level in the one-hour period. All we really suggested to the low-voltage AV team is that we put a limiter such that, you know, when the, when someone scores a touchdown and the commentator screams into the microphone, yay, you know, touchdown, everyone's excited, that the maximum sound level that the sound system can produce doesn't exceed a certain level, so when that happens, that those... So when that happens, that those, in a one-hour period, that's six minutes of time, um that we do not exceed that L ten value. That's really the extent of what this limiter is gonna do. It's really kind of chopping off the highest highs.
And could you share, um how is that monitored? Where is that monitored? Are there sensors on uh different parts of the, on some of the light posts that are on the opposite side? How, how does that, uh is that monitored or is that just uh wish and hope on the goodwill of whoever's running the sound?
Uh this is a little bit beyond my purview, but my understanding is that it's an electronic limiter. It basically limits the maximum voltage that is applied to the speakers themselves. So it does require a little bit of tuning to match the design in our acoustic report. Um but it basically, any input from the sound board won't exceed a certain voltage value. And then when it's tuned to an actual acoustic pressure level, and tuned, I mean, just, you play that sound level and make sure that it matches the acoustic model that we put together. Um it doesn't matter how much input you put into the sound system, this limiter, electronic limo- limiter, excuse me, will not allow the speakers to produce any higher of a sound level.
Sure, I'm just trying to figure out how that fits into other uh components that generate sound as well, and if that was some active monitoring or real-time modulation that took into account um stadium noise, band noise, et cetera, et cetera, which are things that we've heard. And then so you're saying it's not, it's just about the speakers themselves?
Yeah, it's, it's only a control measure for the loudspeakers themselves.
Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner Goldsman?
Thank you Chair. Um I guess my question was really around the things they can't control and how that came into the, the sound study. Um specifically, you've got halftime marching band show, right? Twenty minutes of music being played, uh you can't uh dampen it, it's, it's loud. So how does that play into the, the sound study and, and how it fits within um the, the values that you're showing here?
So there's a couple of things going on there. Um the first of which is, again, going back to our noise metrics, I'll defer to the L fifty. Um so again, over a one-hour period, which is how the L fifty is defined, um is the sound level that is not exceeded for, or is the sound level, excuse me, that is exceeded for a thirty-minute period. So you're talking about a twenty-minute um performance with ten minutes, maybe five minutes on either side of that, call it, of um relative silence, and then you get back to the game. So it's only a small piece of that L fifty, and there's some kind of intermittent shuffling of, okay, what happens next um around that? Um and then um, boy, I lost my train of thought. Oh, and then the other part of that is typically while the band is playing, the crowd is relatively quiet, you're not screaming and shouting during the performance, and you don't have the loudspeakers playing during the performance. So it's also considering the frequency of use. You don't have all three sound sources going maximum volume all at the same time is the other component of that.
Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Albrecht?
Uh thank you Chair. I think we've heard a lot about football. Um my question is related to what is the f- field particularly for this site being used for currently? Are there games being played? Are there spectators? Is that a normal occurrence already at this site?
Hi, I'm John Anderson, Activities Director at Kennedy High School. Uh we currently, uh football primarily uses as our main practice field after school. We currently on weekends will play some varsity soccer games uh for both boys and girls. Um we have in the past hosted track meets, some small triangulators with uh about three schools, and we play lower-level football games and some varsity lacrosse games. We do have a, currently have a small set of stands there that I believe the capacity is four hundred and eighty-eight, and we've never gotten close to that number of four hundred and eighty-eight in there already. So uh in terms of a sound system, we have a little, essentially portable sound system that I roll out with a cart from the shed that we would use for those games. So we do currently use that field uh for some varsity competitions. Uh we've only ever played one varsity football game there in the history of school, and that was during the COVID season of twenty twenty when we had those ten inches of snow in the late season that we had to play in that field. So that's what we currently use it for.
If I may.
And, and point question, a football halftime is only fifteen minutes um in high school. You can't even extend it one for twenty minutes, but that's usually for, for homecoming when you're doing coronation stuff for about half that, so.
Thank you. I have one more question for you, it may be the expert here.
Of course.
Um ballpark, what is the highest attendance you think you've seen at Lincoln for, I assume, a, a Kennedy football game?
Uh the, the highest point in the last six years, we were, uh which was the last time we hosted Jefferson, uh and we were at fifteen hundred, I believe. And any of our attendance in the subsequent years near that has not been close to that number. We average about, um trying to remember back to that sheet I put together for the attendance amounts, we're about five hundred or so for a game.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions for the applicant? Commissioner Curry?
I guess, thank you Chair. I will ask, uh yeah, so I think there was discussion last time about hosting regional events and some concern and um where does the uh, the s- school district stand on that today with, I don't know, have they agreed to something internally or what's the plan there?
Uh I think I can speak for myself uh and for the school district when we say we don't plan on hosting any additional events that we don't already host already. You know, from time to po- time, depending on our seed in sectional playoffs, we may be called upon to host a game. We have hosted sectional football playoff games in the past. I know Jefferson hosted one at Lincoln this year, we hosted one at Lincoln last year. Uh our attendance for those games haven't been any greater than they would normally be. Uh and we, so we're not gonna, we don't, we're not looking to add additional events that we would potentially host already. And we hosted a sectional uh soccer game on that site this fall already.
Thank you. Other questions for the applicant?
Okay, seeing none. Um this item is a public hearing. We did have a speakers register at the door. I have a list of names that I will call in order on the register. Um I do note that there was an item on here that just says students without names, I'm not able to call, so if there is um desire for specific students who would like to register, um you would need to do that over there. And again, this is for the Kennedy Stadium item. So I'm going to apologize if I um can't read handwriting or if my um English skills are rusty, but the first uh speaker on the list is Terry Delahaye.
Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Terry Delahaye. I live at one-three-seven.
Yeah, I hear you.
I live at one-three-seven East Ninety-Eighth Street, AKA Old Chocopee Road. Um my concern is the inadequate parking um as it relates to the, to this, and also relates to other events that occur at Kennedy. Um the postage stamp lot that you have just is not adequate for parking. Um and I'm, my concern is multiple events, two or three events. Two weeks ago, two weekends ago, you had, there, they had um three events going on. There was an event at the, the field, and then in the event, uh um in the auditorium, the dance contest or recital, something close to, near and dear to my granddaughter. Um and then a volleyball or basketball tournament. And it was kind of mayhem going on. Um I clicked a few shots, if you want to see them, but I had people parking in front of my um, my uh driveway, people close to, parking too close to stop signs, people close to um uh fire hydrants. Then there was a lot, there's, this has gone, been, and I've been here for thirty years, I've, so I've seen this thing come around, and it's getting worse. And um we've just gotta put a kibosh at multiple uh events going at this, this site here. We're not like a third and fourth tier, uh tier, exer, like Eastview, Apple Valley, Rosemont, Lakeville North and South, it's, they're much larger venues. Um so that we had, and then also the people parking, um they, they do this all the time, park on the s- uh grass, just park right up on the grass. It's, it's, people are frustrated. These people are coming in from um outside the state, outs- outstate and outside the state. The individual parked in my spot was, in front of my place was from Nebraska, this large contingency from Nebraska. And it's great because these people like this because we've got one thing that the other people don't, the other venues don't, and it's the Mall of America. And when they see that they're coming here, you know, they want to go to Mall of America, it's located close, which is great. It's great, great venue for that. But um we just don't have adequate parking for multiple events. So if you want to do that, you either have to eliminate some green space, put up a parking ramp, or worse, just bulldoze the school and have an event place. That's what you want to do. The other, the other thing is to uh maybe think outside the box and shuttle.
To wrap up your comments, we're at three minutes.
Okay.
You can finish your, your sentence, that's, go ahead.
So, yeah. Um any help would be, would be great. Um I have no problem with having events, it's just multiple events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list is John Anderson.
John Anderson, Activities Director, lifelong Bloomington resident. Uh I gotta count up my numbers, very binary, one, zero, 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 one, Tenth Avenue South. Um I've been involved in Bloomington sports literally my whole life, from the time I played BAA, all the way through high school, then as a coach, now as an Activities Director. Um it has been our dream to have stadiums at the high school, and the impact that it could have on our communities, our school communities, as well as the east and west side of Bloomington, creating centers where we can gather, you know, not having to transport and move our students four miles or a couple miles away off campus. The ability to build events and build culture and increase the student experience for our student athletes and our student populations uh would be massive for our schools, you know? Um I encourage you to move this project forward. We've obviously met the, the standards and everything that we've been asked to meet. Um and we're, our students are very excited for this possibility to have this, the stadium right here, where we can have events right there, where we can have host football games, soccer games, lacrosse, you know, track meets, uh all those things that our students want to be involved with, but struggle. If you look at our parking lot during the school day, we don't have the same amount of students who are driving to school as we once did, you know, nearly thirty years ago when I graduated. You know, our, our populations don't get the licenses that they once did. So having things that our students can get, uh can get to and readily attend would be a massive in, uh upgrade for our student populations at both schools. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Whitney Line.
Hi, thank you. Um I live at eight-nine-three-six Vincent Circle, um which for those that don't have a map in their brain of Bloomington is about a stone's throw from Lincoln Stadium right now. Um I, just like everybody else in the community, work really hard. Um I don't like a nuisance. Um at night, I want to sit out on my patio and just relax, and what I can tell you is that um it has never, ever once been a problem whatsoever, living as close as we do to the Lincoln Stadium right now. Um small sound muffles, um low lights. I actually had to text a friend of mine and say, do they have a marching band during football games? Because I've never heard one. Um in fact, the muffled sounds that we do hear is incredibly pleasant and lovely, and it really allows us to feel closer to the community. And so I also just want to say that I very much support moving forward with both stadiums. Um I think it would be good for the children, I think it would be good for the athletes and for our community as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Lindsay Frey-Palmquist.
Lindsay Frey-Palmquist, I live at one-zero-two-one-one Johnson Circle. Um I think that it's really respons- it's important to do this responsibly, um and part of that, I think mitigation is super important. Um I can't really talk about birds today, so I'm gonna talk about responsible use. Um noise is important because there are currently no usage conditions for this. Uh they could be used for over forty school games, which was in our correspondence with the superintendent. It could also be used for regional events, as was talked about today, and uh the sound systems for the loudspeakers and lights could potentially be used every single day for practices if people wanted to play music on the speakers while they did that. There are no conditions set for this at present. Um in November, we heard, all of us here, many times from uh the applicant that it would be impossible to comply with the sound ordinances at the residential property lines, um and that they would need a variance. So it was a surprise to the neighbors, and we had a lot of questions when a study appeared on April third that showed compliance by one decibel point. Um according to Lauren Dickerson from the MPCA, currently both schools have air quality permits, which means the MPCA is the regulatory authority for enforcing noise standards should violations be committed. In Code seven-zero-three-zero-point-zero-zero-three-zero, Bloomington as the municipality must take all reasonable measures within its jurisdiction to prevent noise violations that may occur immediately upon establishment of land use. We believe that the study that Veneklausen provided is incomplete. Um we have consulted with two professionals in acoustics and sound engineering, and they identified the following issues and questions. The actual data and assumptions used to calculate the geometry of the model were not provided. One sound professional told me this is standard scientific practice, and he has never seen a study that doesn't include this. I have asked for that six times, and I was, I have the dates and things, but I don't have time to tell you about that. Um there also was the use of hemispherical spreading of sound without reflection of calculated off of buildings, terrain, or homes. Um in the figure in the Jefferson one, where it is only one decibel of compliance, uh reflection off of that house would ordinarily compound on itself with the direct, the original direction from the sound, and add three decibels, which would put that at sixty-seven, which is over the L ten number. So we have a lot of questions about these, and we would like to be able to examine that data just to see how they achieve that result. Um Veneklausen also used ISO nine-six-one-three as part of its methodology, which it listed in a report and a letter it provided, um and a Predictor Lima software by Soft Noise um that could and does have the capability to use terrain building reflectivity and direction, and I'm not understanding why they didn't use a three-D model for that um when it would show the terrain and the reflections off of all of the buildings, and I feel like we would have a better understanding of where they got to with that. Um and then on May seventh, May second, at a boys soccer game, we just took measures with a sound meter of our own for fifteen minutes and recorded sixty-five to eighty decibels near the property line, and we felt like that was more than the applicant has done at this point.
Thank you. The uh next name on the list is Catherine Babcock.
I live at three-fifteen East Old Chocopee Road. Good evening. There are two codes that we think are still being, um that we'd like you to look at. One is um that they haven't resolved is the parking code. It's um city code two-one-point-three-oh-one-point-oh-six. By the way, I'm not here to stop the stadiums, I'm here to help build a more responsible stadium. And the parking code two-one-point-three-oh-one-point-oh-six, this talks about traffic safety. It talks about uh spillover conflicts, it talks about minimizing the degradation, and it talks about promoting traffic, traffic safety and accessibility for um emergency vehicles in these tight neighborhoods. Um the second one is- Um, the second one is a light code on the plans that you're about to approve, and we don't have, this could just be an oversight with the architects, but we have, we still have a TLC BT five, seven, five, which is a ball tracker, which is an uplighting point, it's still on the plan. So if you're approving plans tonight, you should know that that's still on the plans. Also still on the plans is TLC RGBW, which is a flashing light, which also violates a city ordinance. That city ordinance is in lighting, and it is lighting two, one, point, three, zero, one, dash, number three. So that you have both of those as ordinances that need to be addressed for the plans that you are about to approve, if you do approve them. Um, secondly, um, we're looking for some mitigation, uh, from the school district, installing plants and trees that provide an ecosystem that services the current local wildlife populations, something that also helps to buffer the noise, buffer the view, buffer the sight. Uh, we're looking for mitigation of sound, possibly by reducing stadium capacity to more realistic numbers. The stadium as proposed could be outsized, based on the current attendance, five hundred fans at the Kennedy Stadium. We're talking about five hundred seats going to two thousand, five hundred seats, so we don't even reach that necessity. So mitigate through stadium capacity. Uh, we're looking for, um, a proof of parking in Kennedy that's going to remove an acre of turf of playing fields. I would hate to see the kids lose an acre of playing fields behind there. Um, that's green turf, that's healthy area for, for all of our student athletes. Uh, the conditional use permit that the neighbors are asking for is a good faith, um, signature between the schools and a neighborhood commission, that the, the school district will indeed use it for what they say they're going to use it for, which is making, um, the nighttime stadium more tolerable to surrounding neighbors, so it doesn't become a public nuisance. Um, residents are aware of the common law, I think that your former city council member, or no, city council, former city attorney, um, made that clear, and then based on a facility only intended for regional purposes, the concurrent use agreement does not address this. Using it only for, um, school events, for Bloomington school events, is something that we would ask for in a conditional use permit. At some point the city-
Ask you to wrap your comments, your three minutes is expired.
Okay, thanks. At some point, the city needs to address how the school rents out property for profit in an R-one neighborhood zone, which I don't believe is legal.
Thank you. Do we have any additional people sign up at the door? Do you go ahead and come forward and, uh, introduce yourself? I don't have the updated roster.
Yeah, I'm on the roster for Jefferson.
Oh, this is the Kennedy one right now.
Yeah, I know that, but, um, it's important that I speak.
And you can introduce yourself at the microphone, so that people can hear you.
Sure, it appeals, it, it's for both. First of all, I attended the meeting, uh, just a couple of days.
There you go.
My, my name is Debbie Jacobson. Um, I've lived in Bloomington for probably seventy years now, and, um, I'm very concerned about what has happened. I would like to retain the status quo, um, for any or all of the stadiums. Um, what I would like to see is a moratorium for probably the next ten, ten years, and maybe, um, a million dollar bond, so that if the houses are sold, um, and they go down five percent, that they'll be restored and reimbursed. And then if, if the, the four items that are covered, the noise, the pollution, um, all of the different parking instances, damage to the environment, if they're not satisfied, what, what I'd like to see is that the stadium, if it does get approved, would be deplatformed, and that the Minnesota people from Bloomington would not have to pay extra taxes or extra fees for restoring the land to the way it was. I know that laws are passed with all, without all of the information, uh, at, at present available. Things change, laws change. I know right now we're dealing with probabilities. They talk about modeling, but modeling is no more than an estimate. It's, it's, um, they use it a lot in science and engineering. In fact, the atom, uh, they just saw what an atom looks like, and it was like in the fifties that it was discovered, and they did it by modeling and probability. Things are abstract, and then they become less experimental as they become real. Um, I just want to bring up an analogous thing that happened recently, which was quite nice to hear. There was a ninety-two-year-old woman who went to the Supreme Court after going through the district and appellate all the way up into the courts, and it was a different type of thing that happened to her. It was regarding a property value. She didn't pay her taxes or her fees, she was delinquent, they took her property, and then she said, "They never got, they never gave a penny back," and as a result, she thought she had to fight it. She felt it was unfair, and she wanted to work, um, to get it resolved. Well, this year, the governor just announced, probably when it was in session, that they were going to have to redo the code, uh, for something that was approved by nine justices in the Supreme Court, and that there would be restitution for all the people that had lost their properties as a result of, of, um, not paying the money that was due.
I'd ask you to wrap up your comments.
Okay, so, um, a summary statement is, I'd like to see a moratorium, I'd like, I'd like to see some provision if the four things that come into, um-
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I say one more thing?
Oh, your time has expired. Do we have anyone else, um, on the list for the Kennedy? And then, is there anyone online for this item?
Chair Roman. Chair Roman, everybody online, the city staff.
Okay. Um, one last call for anyone on the Kennedy Stadium agenda item. Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes, the public hearing is closed. Um, before we begin discussion, um, I'd like to go back to the slide that talked about the four, uh, findings, and I guess we got the, we've got the four findings, we've got the pyramid. And so I think, uh, um, these two slides, I asked staff to make sure we had available for us, because I think it is important to remind ourselves as commissioners, and when, when we start on this body, we are drilled about the pyramid of discretion. Uh, and I think there are times when we have more, and there are times we have less, and that's why I think this slide is important. And, um, you know, I, regardless of any of our individual opinions about children, or chickadees, or charities, or anything else that starts with a C-H, we don't have a lot of choice here. We have, our choice is, our, our job is to review these four findings, review the materials that the staff have presented, hear what we heard from the public, um, about how those may or may not, um, be another eye and another view of the reading of the materials and those findings. And so as we have this conversation, I'd encourage, uh, remind the commission that that is our scope. And, um, you know, I will make a couple of comments based on some of the things that we heard. Um, you know, we heard something, some comments about multiple events. Um, this application does not bleed into other school activities, but it does call out for this use, that there will not be multiple events. We also heard, um, some questions about, um, emergency vehicles navigating streets. I should clarify with the staff, there was a comment about the uplights and flashing lights, and I thought that the presentation indicated those had been removed, but it sounds like possibly that may not be accurate in the materials.
Sure, certainly, Chair, Commissioners. Yeah, the, the comment was correct, that in the packet, that that light fixture was, uh, included. There was a miscommunication between the applicant design team and the lighting designer, uh, but after the packet was published, they have since removed that fixture. So, I guess I, I could provide my own assurance that, that, uh, as written in the condition of a permit for the stadium would not be issued, uh, with that light fixture on it.
Because that light fixture is not code compliant.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then I think, you know, our, our traffic and engineering staff is, is very on top of, um, some of those issues around schools. I think it is a reasonable question about, um, the proof of parking, then we have a slide that talks about options for the street. So I think there may need to be some review of one-side parking during events. I'm not sure what that might be, but I think that's a reasonable thing for us to look at, because I think people will remember at the last meeting, I talked about my experiences that our, our traffic and our, our traffic control at our schools is horrendous during, on a regular day, let alone on an event, when you have people who are not there on a regular basis. Um, I know, noticed in the packet that it sounds like we have, usually have one supervisor and four officers at events at Kennedy, or at Lincoln, and so, um, that will help. Those are my initial observations, based on the things I heard from the public, and I wanted to cover those things before we moved into discussion, as is the privilege of the chair. Commissioner Albrecht.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Coincidentally, um, my youngest cousin has been competing in the section lacrosse tournament, so I have actually visited six stadiums in the past three weeks. Um, so I was very keen on looking at all of them and having a good sense of what time it is, and what the lighting is, and all of that. Setting all of that aside, because it's really not about individual opinions on our, on our purview, it's not really what we're here to do, um, I look at these findings, and I believe that the findings have been met. The highlighted finding, number four, uh, regarding injurious, you know, we've talked about injurious at, in this body quite a bit, uh, because this is the sticky one that always, if, uh, someone from the public, um, comes, then this is the one that maybe is most misunderstood. And I think, uh, Mr. Centenario did a great job with describing it at the beginning and the onset here. I don't think that, given the information that has been provided, um, the conditions that are included with the staff report, um, regarding the final sign-off, once, uh, the final plans are put together, uh, I believe that these findings overall have been made, uh, and I am in support of approving this project.
Thank you, Chair. Um, the thing I have to say, obviously, this has been a long road, um, and I feel that we've done our due diligence as a city, as a school district, as a community, to look at all of the variables of how this could impact, um, our residents and our neighbors and our, um, our community. Um, looking at the different variables that could be impacted by these findings, um, you know, we, we have completed a noise study. There, it's, it's a scientific analysis, obviously, there are people that are much smarter than I am doing that, that noise study, um, but it has been done, um, and has been found to be compliant to the best of our knowledge. Um, looking at light, I love that with current technology, that we can make better use of light, light, um, in, in our spaces, um, thinking about even twenty years ago, LEDs were not as, uh, prevalent, it would be much brighter, and I, I think we're a lot more sensitive to light as we were before, and I, I'm just appreciative that we have the technology to, to really make it usable space, but also safe for, um, our residents, but also the wildlife that live and migrate through our neighborhoods. Um, I am really appreciative of our, our traffic and, um, engineers, um, looking at how can we mitigate, you know, safety concerns for people that are walking and as well as driving to this location. Um, the new crosswalk on, um, between Stevens and First, I think is going to be a great addition, not just for this, this, um, stadium, but for the school, um, as a whole. Um, and, and so, looking at the things that we've done as a community to mitigate that harm, um, I think outweigh, um, the harm that could potentially be. I don't see that, um, you know, looking at this application, it, there's so much benefit, and there's really very little harm as, that can be mitigated, um, prevalent, so I'll be supportive.
Commissioner, or, not Commissioner, sorry, Senior Planner Centenario, one of the things I forgot to ask about was, um, does a development like this, um, just have requirements for trees, shrubs, foundation plantings, things of that nature?
Chair Commissioners, uh, traditionally no. Uh, the commission could always consider code amendments, uh, to require, um, landscaping. I mean, based on the size of the, in the scope, it would be significant, um, so, but that is, you know, the, uh, if the, if the commission wants to add that to our plan item-
There's not a current performance standard for that.
No, there isn't.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, as I look at this, and the, the items that have gotten the most attention, the lighting and the sound, um, I think what I fall back on is that we have professional designers who have looked at this, and we have professional architects who have put together documents, and also professional engineers who have also put together their documents, and sound experts have been brought upon and put their name on a report that says, "This is what I believe as an expert in sound." And I, as a planning commissioner, don't have any expertise, um, that would give me any ability to say, "No, Mr. Sound Engineer, you, you're wrong." I, I don't have that ability, and so I, I fall back on and trust their expertise, that they have done their due diligence and have put their professional reputation and signature behind this, and I'm inclined to believe their report is accurate. And so then it comes down to the findings, and as I briefly look through these findings, um, I do not believe this development is in conflict with the comprehensive plan. I don't believe it's in conflict with an adopted district plan, I don't believe there is one here. Um, there's no city code provisions or state laws that it's violating, and so the fourth one about being injurious to the surrounding neighborhood, if you think about, you know, the spirit of that, when it relates to noise, when we've had noise, um, applications come before us, what, we've really looked hard at are things like industrial facilities that are emitting some sort of noise twenty-four, seven, and if you're in violation of that, that can be seriously injurious to a neighbor or something like that. And in this case, not only do we have a sound report that, that states that it, it won't exceed code, I, I don't believe, um, that these events, which are fairly few and far between, if you're talking about maximum football games, if, as we talked about, those peak volumes may exceed a certain threshold at some point, when Kennedy scores a touchdown, but a, a few times a year with that, I don't believe is injurious to the surrounding neighborhood. So for that reason, I can make all four findings, and will be supporting this application.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know, I guess I, generally, I'm supportive, I mean, I'm looking at all the different high school football stadiums in south metro area, southwest metro area, and everything is, you know, there's houses right across the street. Um, generally, I kind of look at what's been presented and think, "I don't know how much I trust the study that's been done, but if everybody else already has these things in place, I don't know, you know, why this would be any different than what's already kind of been set as a precedent by other cities in the area." So, and like Commissioner Cookton said, you know, it, there's no, it doesn't, uh, seem to go against the comprehensive plan, so, um, you know, I guess, I think it's something that makes sense.
I think, uh, for me, I, I'm very much aligned with the thoughts that Commissioner Cookton had around the findings. Do I believe that this change is disruptive? Uh, it's, sure, it's, it's different, it's, it will bring a different type of traffic, it will bring a different type of noise, um, it will bring a different, uh, impact to the neighborhood than there is today. That is a true, that is very true, and I think we've heard that from the people who live closest to this facility. But again, the threshold is injurious, and, um, the, the good example I can think of is, you know, when we, we had a data center, uh, that we were asked to review, and, uh, we asked, I don't know if we asked for a sound study, everyone was presented with it, and it clearly didn't work. And, uh, we said no, we sent it back, and they, I don't remember what they changed, but some stuff was changed, and we even looked at, we even looked at, you know, your winter sound, because we know sound is different in the winter in Minnesota. Um, and so I think we, we have been pretty consistent and intentional on sound- think we, we have been pretty consistent and intentional on sound, and, you know, whether or not any one of us feels confidence in, in, in the information we're given, I think is, is up to us to decide, but I think that, you know, I, I am in line with the things that other commissioners have, um, identified. I think it would be great if the school, um, could put some thought into, again, we don't have standards we can't require, but, you know, I don't know if it's shrubbery along Third, if it's shrubs, if it's trees, I don't know what it is. Um, but I think, again, it's good for the city, it's good for students, it's good for the environment. Um, something to soften some of that would be great, uh, but I don't, again, to the extent of what I'm allowed to weigh in on as a commissioner, I, I believe this has met, the materials we've been provided meet the, meet the requirements. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to add one more comment. I did watch the city council meeting from Monday. Um,
It was long, wasn't it?
It was long. It was long. Um, but it was informative, and I really appreciated some of the council members', uh, thoughts around, uh, the parking to the north on this side, uh, the pond site, the pond center site. Um, and so, my one sort of more personal suggestion to the city that they would think about significant wayfinding, um, for that, I had no idea the parking lot was there. Now, I don't have a kid in high school, so I don't frequent Kennedy. Um, however, I think some wayfinding, uh, around the parking so that, uh, people are not choosing to park on the streets, and there are some off-site parking, or off-street parking, I think would be a really good nod to the neighborhood. Uh, and so, I know that was mentioned at the city council meeting, I really appreciated that thought, and I wanted to add that as well.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Goldsman.
If I may, I'd like to make a motion.
Um, I think you could.
Thank you, Chair. In case PL 2023-157, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve final site and building plans for site and stadium improvements to the Kennedy High School athletic campus, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve final site and building plans at the subject property. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries. This is a final decision unless an appeal is received at City Hall by 4:30 PM on June 11th. The next item is final site and building plans for stadium and site improvements at Jefferson High School, and Senior Planner Centenario with the encore.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Uh, I'll try not to be redundant. A lot of the same elements, concerns, and again, discussion about the findings apply to this as well, so I won't repeat myself. But now we're shifting gears to, uh, the Jefferson High School site. Again, the, the timeline is the same, the applications came in at the same time, and followed the same, uh, path, uh, to where we are today. Again, we are reviewing a, a final site and building plan, which is much lower on the discretion pyramid as other applications. So, the existing conditions, uh, at Jefferson, I have, again, the, the football field or the stadium area outlined in red, it's used for track and field, soccer, lacrosse, as well as football. And, uh, similar to your last application, not much physically would change, uh, in terms of the campus. Uh, the, the stadium would still be accessed, uh, via Heritage Hills Drive or Johnson Avenue from, uh, 102nd Street. Uh, and i- in this particular case, as I'll show in a moment, uh, when we think of it as a campus, we do include the Olson schools and the capacity, the parking capacity that's on those sites as well. Another image that was put together by the applicant team, uh, just in a, a two-dimensional graphic, you see the, the football field with new turf, lighting and sound system. Uh, in this case, it's a little bit different, given the characteristics of the site. Uh, the home bleachers would be on the west, and then the, uh, away bleachers would be on the east side of the, of the stadium, more of a traditional, um, way to organize it, with very little other changes to the site. You know, there, this is a bit of a bowl, uh, its topography is a bit of a bowl, and in order to have an entrance area, uh, there has to be a, a fair amount or a long sidewalk to accommodate, uh, folks with disabilities. And so, need, need to make sure that that's still an accessible, uh, an accessible stadium. And here is the stadium elevation. Again, because the home and the away bleachers are separated, uh, the home bleachers are a little bit, uh, smaller, uh, than at Kennedy, uh, but again, the total capacity is the same, uh, 2,500. I've outlined the, uh, surface parking areas, uh, within the school campus. You know, there's quite a bit within the, the Jefferson High School campus specifically. There is s- some overflow parking immediately to the west of Johnson Avenue that you can see here, and then there is a, there is a l- a tremendous amount of parking at Olson. It's not the most convenient, to be sure, uh, but it is available, and, uh, you, you know, for folks that don't mind walking a little bit, it, it is a good option. Just another image, uh, here you can kind of better see what that sidewalk looks like. You have your entrance area on the north end of the site, but then you have, you have to have a longer sidewalk, given the t- the topography And this is just an image of the existing and the proposed conditions. Uh, you can see from what's there today, uh, there are some bleachers on, on the site, but very few, uh, and then what is proposed, uh, you know, the 2,000 occupancy bleachers on the west side, and then 500 on the east. But al- you can also see that very little else is changing on site. Similar to Kennedy, there, there are some, uh, accommodations for on-street parking. Uh, you know, again, France Avenue, 102nd Street, uh, on-street parking is not permitted, but within the neighborhood, there is some, uh, allowances for that. And so, presumably, some of that would be utilized from folks if there's a high occupancy event. Not sure if it's necessarily needed, or if it's more convenient, uh, we don't count it towards the parking requirement, uh, but again, I think it's worth noting that, uh, that would be available. Again, we, uh, dealt with sound, and in this case, the most impacted property from a sound perspective is a residential home to the southwest of the stadium. And, uh, again, the applicant, applicant's consultant modeled this both for an L-10 and an L-50 level, and was found to be compliant, uh, both from the L-10 and the L-50. Again, that's for daytime, uh, using the daytime standards, it would not be compliant for nighttime. So again, having all activities, uh, end before 10:00 PM is, is critical to be, to be within compliance. And here is the, uh, model for the L-50 level. Si- similar issues with lighting, uh, the same light systems were used. You had, you know, robust, or four poles for the stadium, robust, uh, LEDs, uh, fixtures on those poles, the ball tracker system, uh, it hasn't been permitted. I don't imagine it will ever be permitted in City Bloomington, given the, the principles that we have in our lighting code. Uh, so again, you know, what we have is a condition related to the lighting, and really that it, the light, the permits could not be issued until the lighting plan is found to be compliant. And similarly, with the photometrics or the, the on-surface lighting, uh, it's, it's quite a bit less, uh, in what the plans that they're showing. Uh, north is to the right, so it's a different view, but that same property that's, uh, most impacted by noise is also the closest for light to, uh, but the level that was identified in the model was .09 foot candles, so almost zero. Uh, so that's well within compliance in terms of a light trespass perspective. And with that, we are recommending approval, uh, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Mr. Centenario, I noticed on the street parking, uh, slide, on the east side of Johnson, parking is permitted, but not on the west. Can you talk a little bit about why, is it Johnson? Yes, Johnson Avenue South. You see, uh, one side of the street is permitted versus the others not. How is that, how is it signed, or, um, how, how do residents know, and, and why is it different on one side of the street versus the other?
Thank you, Commissioner. I would love, again, to defer to our, uh, traffic experts.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Goldsman, there's a number of things at play there. We work closely with the school on the parking around there with the school and with emergency services, um, and I don't know the specifics behind those, um, zones there. They are signed, um, always. Um, and most likely, though, it's because that parking allows proximity to something that people want to go to, it's the closest place that they can allow it, while still maintaining access for fire and emergency vehicles, safety for site distance at driveways and things like that. Um, the, the driveways that, uh, serve the east there are fairly high volume, and so it's not a surprise that you would want to restrict parking near those driveways, so you don't have, uh, any, any sort of site conditions or, um, where kids could come out. There's also a crosswalk there that's well-used, um, and we always make sure we restrict parking near those crosswalks to the extent possible. So, I don't know the specifics, but those are the general criteria that we look into when we're thinking about those restrictions around school.
I think anecdotally, I think that loop, uh, drive to the east side of Olson Middle School, I think is a bus loop, and so I imagine there's some turning radius considerations.
And if I may have another question for staff on this, just as it's been a topic, this, uh, 102nd Street, um, corridor, uh, is projected to have some changes coming up. Um, can, can staff talk a little bit about the proposed changes to the 102nd for safety, speeding, um, and, uh, just general, um, updates, just so the, the residents here know what's happening?
Commissioner Goldsman, appreciate the opportunity to speak on those changes that are forthcoming. So, as the, uh, planning commission recommended and the council approved, uh, we did, uh, forward a set of speed limit changes on larger roadways, including 102nd Street between France and Normandale. The most significant thing here is the speed will go from 35 to 30, and then we are working through the summer to implement school zones in front of the Olson campus and the Jefferson campus. That will be on 102nd Street, uh, France Avenue, which is the Hennepin County roadway, uh, and then, as well as Johnson Avenue, in the areas where, uh, kids are, are coming and going, or being picked up and dropped off. Um, we'll also include one likely on France Avenue near Canterbury. There's a well-used crosswalk and an overhead flashing beacon right there, too, so that's probably going to get that same treatment. So that's the near-term plans. Longer term, that is still a four-lane section. It is the only four-lane section of 102nd Street remaining. Um, four-lane sections, uh, have some, some good sides, they also have some, some troubles, too. Um, and so we will be approaching the city council, um, to do a study, a longer-term study, to see what can be done to change that cross-section. One other change I didn't mention, Johnson Avenue will go to a 25 mile an hour speed limit here in about 30 days. That's the default speed limit for the city. It's currently 30, it will go to 25 here over the next 30 days, so watch for that as well.
And to clarify, the school zone, when it is implemented on the city-controlled speeds, streets, will be 20?
It will be 20, that's correct.
Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Got questions for you. Uh, sorry, so you did, you, can you go over those, uh, kind of maybe newer safety features, or any, um, yeah, what do we call it, traffic calming, anything that's being done in the area, again?
Um, if you could be a little, narrow that down a little bit more, um, in terms of-
Any, any plans to, you know,
Yeah.
-support safety in the area?
Yeah, so I think the biggest thing is, is bringing that speed limit from 30 to 30, or from 35 to 30, as well as the school zone speed limits are the biggest and most significant changes, and drivers will see that, uh, if all works well, we'll have those in place by the start of the school year in fall. Um, we'll continue to, to look at pedestrian circulation and movements, but, um, there's crosswalks existing, um, and so these stadiums aren't going to add, uh, to the extent that we understand. They're not going to add new crossing points or things where we have to do a lot of remedial striping and signage work to make these stadiums work. It's an area that's already pretty well-covered with infrastructure, uh, for people on foot, uh, as well as vehicles.
What would be your best guess as to the areas that are going to see the most, what streets are going to see the most parking? Do you think it'd be north of 102nd, or south of Heritage Hills, or?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Curry, it's a good question, and it's, it's a hard one to answer, because it depends on the event. Uh, and I, the, the range of events that we could see in these things, uh, go from very small to very large. Uh, right now, there's a number of events that happen in the high school that generate parking, on-street parking, north of 102nd Street. In fact, we see those, uh, we've seen that just a couple of weeks ago. Uh, cars were parked on the north side of 102nd Street for a large event at the school. That's fairly, um, it's not infrequent, but it, it happens. Um, with the stadium, obviously, the parking down Johnson Avenue and Heritage Hills is fairly close, and so I could expect to see some parking there if it's not, uh, removed for other reasons, for safety. Um, but just because it's in very close proximity. Uh, as you, as you move away, I, I, you know, thinking about, uh, parking on the other side of France Avenue on the east side, that's less likely, just because the, the crossing of France Avenue and the distance involved there. So, if I were to just look at that, that's what I'd think about.
Okay. And then, um, as I was noticing, the comprehensive plan, uh, there's a safe routes to schools network that the city's planning on expanding. Are there any plans for that, uh, for Jefferson High School at all, or the, or Olson?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Curry, there, the Jefferson and Olson will be included in the safe routes to school plan. They already are under a safe routes to schools plan. This would get us into more detail, looking at specific walking locations, walking routes, and things like that. So, that work continues. Frankly, the work on school areas never really stops. We're always reaching out to the school staff and working on those routes to get people to and from school.
So what is, uh, expectation on when that is going to be done?
Uh, as soon as we can receive funding on that. So we don't have a specific timeline. We continue to search for funding for the planning and for the implementation.
Got it.
Right now, the focus is mainly on the speed limits.
That program oftentimes will identify a specific project, the school and the city will apply for a grant, and you, you check one off.
Got it.
It's a long, and it's, as Mr. Roberts said, it's a, it's an ongoing journey.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Roberts? Um, the south of Heritage Hills Drive there, I believe that's an apartment or condominium complex there, and there are some, I would assume are private streets through there. Are those signed for no parking, or?
Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Cookton, that would be up to those private property owners. We don't have any authority to go into private property and, and manage their parking or restrict that. To the extent that we do, it's based on fire access, and so fire lanes, the, the police and fire will get involved with that, but we don't, as a rule, uh, manage the parking or access on private property.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Curry. Sorry, thank you, Chair. One more. Um, if 100, if this area of 102nd is the only area with four-lane traffic still on 102nd, what, was there any consideration ever given to making this a, a two-lane, uh, in preparation potentially for, uh, football games and increased traffic?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Curry, that's a, a really good question. We have revisited the striping on 102nd Street, France to Normandale, three times with the community and with the council, and we were never able to prevail on a different cross-section. We had proposed, uh, various three-lane cross-sections. This would be a single lane in each direction, two-way left-turn lane, and then bikeable shoulders. Um, we could not garner, uh, community and council support for that change.
Why, why is that?
There were concerns about, uh, traffic for the schools and just, uh, the change and how that would work as well, so.
Okay. There are many things we've seen over time that, it's a new day. Are there questions for staff?
Commissioner Cookton.
I do have a question for Mr. Centenario. Um, can you help me understand, um, what onsite parking means? So, if, I think you had a slide there about, uh, some various things here, and Olson is across the street, presumably that's a different site. So, wha- what are the parameters around that?
Chair, Chair Roman, Commissioner Cookton, it's a great question, and, uh, there, it depends on the land use, on how, where, uh, you have parking supply relative to a parking requirement. So I, I, it's, the text is really small, I apologize for that, but I wanted to have it on the same slide as the various parking lots. And so the code actually tells us, uh, on where you can have the parking supply. And so, it's multifamily, commercial and industrial. That is, the parking has to be within the same site, and there's a distance, a component. Uh, there is no, uh, limitation for an institutional use. So, uh, a place of, uh, worship or a school, uh, they could have parking across the street that could quote-unquote "count" uh, as required parking. So in this case, even though it is at a distance, more of a distance, and isn't the most convenient, we are still able to count, uh, the surface parking at Olson. we are still able to count the surface parking at Olson towards the overall supply.
Thank you, Mr. Cincenario. And I think this is a question for Mr. Toski. Does that mean we must count it? I mean, is there any discretion on, geez, that's awfully far away. I don't find that to be appropriate? Or does the applicant have a right to say, this is our parking?
No, just with that code, sorry, Chair, Commissioner Cookden. With affirmative prohibition, I think everything else is okay. That would be my opinion. We took the time to prohibit specific things, meaning everything else would be permitted. That's how we usually do it in zoning, so.
And this is, okay, very well. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Yes. Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have another question, Mr. Cincenario. When we talk about how many parking stalls are required, it's, I believe it's one-third of the capacity. Should that include folks on the field? I mean, we have 100 players, give or take, and coaches, et cetera. Presumably, they had to drive and park to get there. Is that counted?
Chair Roman, Commissioner, typically, no. When we calculate places of assembly, whether that's this room or across the hall or a congregation, or in this case, a stadium, it's really based on the occupancy of spectators or people seated. Traditionally, we do not try to estimate or calculate bodies on a field or on a stage or some other component of an assembly space. And so in this case, we would, it's a simple calculation, just one-third of the 2,500 occupants for the stadium.
Other questions for staff? Okay. Would the applicant like to speak on this item? No? Are there questions for the applicant? You could come forward. There are some questions. Commissioner Curry?
Thank you, Chair.
Wait for the applicant to come up.
Just quickly, I guess, what was the, when is this project expected to be delivered?
We're currently, Paul Aplikowski, World Architects and Engineers. We're currently working on rebuilding a schedule. We're waiting for results from the city to determine that. There's still a window for us to do that for the, basically for the fall of '25 at this point. But that's not been determined yet.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Thank you. All right, as before, this item is a public hearing. And so I have the roster of those who've signed to speak. Again, I see an item on here that says students and without names, I won't have anyone to call on. So if you were a student who wishes to speak, I would ask you to please see staff at the sign-in table over by the door to be listed. The three-minute shot clock, as you see, is there. And I will let you know if you've exhausted your time. And I thank you both for giving your comments. And I also ask that, there was one point, I don't know where, that there was some reaction from the crowd to someone's comments. I would ask that people please hold their reaction. Everyone is entitled to their position on these things and to be heard and to be respected. And so I would ask that that please continue. The first name on the list is Carolyn Bell.
Hi, my name is Carolyn Bell. I live at 10156 Irwin Road. And so point of reference, I'm north of 102nd Street, directly across from Johnson Avenue. Currently, with just the school and their events, not including the stadium itself, two trees of my property were hit several times, resulting in removing them at our cost. Concerned that more cars would race out of 100 Johnson onto 102nd, we added a wood fence. That fence has now been hit multiple times. My neighbor to the west had a car that was coming north down Johnson, trying to get to 102nd. That car ended up jumping the curb, going through the fence, landed three feet into the bedroom, and it resulted in over $20,000 worth of damage and months of construction to their home. Their mailbox has been hit multiple times. The neighbors whom have driveways that back onto Johnson have made adjustments to the schedules to avoid before and after-school traffic. Seventeen buses and all the school traffic twice a day. A neighbor on the corner of Johnson 102nd driveway is blocked if there are three cars at the stop sign. A stoplight was suggested at one time, but they decided it would make it even worse. On average, over 40 years we've lived there, I call 911 seven to eight times a year. This does not include the accidents that the owners just exchange insurance. For a time, the accidents happened so often, we put a broom and a garbage can by the telephone pole so people would start cleaning up all their car remnants. All this goes on while kids are walking to and from school. Yes, our neighborhood is walking distance to three schools. We bought our homes knowing we're close to school and adjusted. But we don't expect a big stadium and all those cars coming out onto Johnson at night on a Friday night. I just think it's a rest before disaster. Some of the neighborhoods around do not have sidewalks. We don't have sidewalks. You asked about parking signs. Currently, on Irwin Road, I'll speak for that road, which is right across from Johnson, it's no parking 8 till 4 September through June. I signed that petition 40 years ago because everyone was parking with their cars parked halfway into our driveway. The garbage guys refused to take garbage. The mail never got delivered because there was just too many cars. I know you talked they can park at Olson or Olson Junior High. I'm here to say they don't. People take the fastest, closest pass of least resistance to get to that stadium. And that's going to be on those side streets because they've done it already. It wasn't designed to handle the traffic. And the traffic increase in the activity center was added and the parking to the north of the football field was no longer for staff only. All the accidents we observed are people trying to get off of 100, off of Johnson onto 102nd. That's it. And I hope you choose to close that road on Johnson out the west side of Jefferson. It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name on the roster is Adam Flanders.
Hello, my name's Adam Flanders, 11300 Jersey Road. Coincidentally, I'm an athletic director at Minneapolis Roosevelt High School. And for my purposes with this argument or this conversation, I'm going to talk about stadiums being venues. Venues, I can see what they do at Roosevelt. They bring the community together. They bring our students together. They help build our culture of our school. They help build the climate of our school. They help for our students to connect with our community, the people around our neighborhood and things like that. We have homes right across the street of, at our stadium at Roosevelt. Our lighting's not an issue. I will admit noise sometimes is an issue, but actually, it's more so during the day, during the daytimes when our students are using the field sometimes for lunch and different activities like that. In April, that marks the 20th year that I've lived in Bloomington. And that also, in that timeframe, we've seen communities that have grown and split and have built stadiums to their, to their liking. Communities such as Woodbury with East Ridge, communities such as Apple Valley with East View and Lake View, excuse me, Lakeville with Lakeville South and Lakeville North. You know, those communities got those stadiums done. We've also seen in the 20 years that I've been at Bloomington, communities that have been straight farmland, you know, have now have built stadiums and schools, venues that attract community, attract their students and help build their community and help build their culture at their school as well. Schools such as St. Michael Albertville, Farmington, Waconia, and different venues that we can think of that are on the outskirts of the metro area that have beautiful-looking stadiums, beautiful venues, beautiful scoreboards. And we're just asking honestly for just something that fits in our footprint that we have. And we really hope that this happens. Venues at high schools give the opportunities for the students to walk out of their building, walk out of their school, walk out of the classroom, go to the venue, not have to jump in their cars, not have to go on a bus, to go to their homecoming game. And I will also say, you know, in terms of football games, home games, it's only four a year. You know, max five if you make it to the playoffs and host. You know, there are soccer games, of course, too, but, you know, maybe four or five on each for boys and girls. So we're only talking about maybe a dozen, you know, venue events, you know, for the fall season. And that's the primary season for those nighttime events. Appreciate the time.
Thank you. The next name on the roster is Debbie Jacobson. Okay, thank you. Lindsay Frey Palmquist.
Lindsay Frey Palmquist, 10211 Johnson Circle. We'll do this again for the Jefferson record. Also, just wanted to follow up on the number of events there. We talked to the superintendent. It is 14 to 15 regular seasons games, 11 potential playoff games, 15 additional sporting events at all levels games. Grand total around 41 night games at all levels. If you include championship games, don't anticipate it will be that many. But again, if they choose to rent this out on weekends and/or use sound systems and lights for practices, it could be exponential. Looking for conditional uses on that if you feel inclined. Noise compliance issues, again, would love to discuss how the city of Bloomington as municipality must take all reasonable measures within its jurisdiction to prevent noise violations that may occur immediately upon the establishment of land use. That's related to the MPC, the MPCA's regulatory authority under the active air quality permits at both schools. We do not believe in the neighborhoods surrounding both schools that the Venocloson study is accurate, nor does it have the data and assumptions required and inputted for the geometry provided that give you the methodology details to decide if it is accurate. These are important to our ability to understand, review and accept the study details and estimate that compliance. BKL, the largest acoustical consultancy in Western Canada, has more than 200 years of experience and says that the quality of noise predictions depends greatly on the accuracy of the inputs. We are unable to view those inputs. I have asked for those inputs on six different occasions and have never been given an answer. The professionals I consulted with, who are two acoustical engineers, discussed the hemispherical spreading of sound in the study with no reflectivity calculated off of building surfaces, terrain or homes. When sound is reflected off a surface such as a house, the reflected sound compounds on the existing directed sound that's headed toward the house and increases the decibel level by three. On the Johnson Avenue and Heritage Hills property, around 300 feet from the center of the football field, the estimated level in the sound study is 64 decibels at the L10. If you add the compounding 3 decibel reflection, it would be an estimated 67 decibels, which exceeds the code for L10 daytime noise pollution levels at the property line. According to BKL, again, the Western Canadian Acoustical Agency, "Sound reflection is an important geometric consideration as sounds can bounce off one surface and cause nuisance in entirely different direction." "Most accurate predictions possible must consider the effects on outdoor environmental noise and include appropriate mitigation measures in the design to avoid costly complaints and retrofits." "In addition, the ISO 9613 modeling program itself has limitations in that it assumes a constant set of conditions within the air that never exactly reflect the real world. And there are serious doubts that exist on the accuracy of some various empirical algorithms used." Thanks.
Thank you. Next on the roster is Mark Morrow.
Hello. Good evening. I am a 16-year resident. My wife and I have two children that are a part of Bloomington Public Schools. And I'm here to talk for the improvements to the site as a positive. The biggest thing is I see investment in our community, even more specifically, investment in our schools, in our high schools. Second element I think that's really, really exciting is the campus experience. As Mr. Flanders pointed out, a lot of benefits to the school, to the community as it relates to the campus experience that these kids will have. Another big piece of this, or the third item I think that's very, very valuable, is the ADA compliance that we're going to see with the site as a result of the improvements. I'll use this week as an example. So Monday night, the boys' high school lacrosse team had a section game there. And believe it or not, the bleachers were full. Now, when I say full, they're probably 90% or more full. But beyond that, we had people standing between the bleachers. Plus that back hill, if you're familiar with the area, the entire line of that hill was full of people, right? Now, the challenge is that we have all kinds of families that are there to watch a game like this. And we've got, let's say, elderly grandparents that cannot navigate that grass hill to get down to the bleachers, right? So they're sitting in the, excuse me, on the back, on the top of the hill, on the grass to watch the game. But great community experience, but just certainly opportunity to improve that area for spectators as well as the students, especially with the site improvements there, with the students coming out on game day. They're not traveling off-campus for that. Other than that, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the roster is Ken Ennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Appreciate your time. I, just like I reiterated last time when I came up and I discussed this with you folks, was, you know, currently Bloomington, Jefferson and Kennedy have a stadium. Now granted, it's an older stadium, but it's steeped in tradition, memories, and it goes back decades. A lot of people have fond memories of the stadium and stadium play there. I particularly joined that group with my sons having both played football there for Jefferson. So I, you know, see the stadium is, yeah, it's been tested over time. It's got adequate parking conditions. It hasn't had issues with the neighbors. We had one neighbor here stand up and say they hardly hear games that are going on there, you know? You know, and it has, you know, yeah, granted, it has improvements needed. It would be nice if there was an artificial turf in there for the students to play on. Maybe some covers over the stands and a locker room for the students to get dressed and taken care of after the games are over. So, you know, it's sad that that was lost when we lost Lincoln Stadium, sold that, you know? I'm really sorry we lost that resource. Currently, Bloomington Jefferson solicits leases, rents their facilities out to other organizations such as AAU, Amateur Athletic Union and Dance America USA on a constant basis during the summer times, which is overcrowding the school and its resource. They have people coming in from all over North Dakota, Wisconsin. I see Wisconsin plays, North Dakota plays, Iowa plays, South Dakota plays. Parking in the lots next to the school. That is a concern for me with this enhanced stadium. You know, they're going to be utilizing this resource in that regard, too. And I see, you know, when these events go on, people running across the 102nd with their kids. They're not using the crosswalks. We have a potential injury situation going on there when these events are occurring. And with the stadium also coming into play, I just see issues. So, you know, it's a bad relationship with the community, with the renting out of these facilities to other organizations such as they're doing. You know, we're seeing people coming into our neighborhoods that are not, you know, abiding by the, you know, basically the rules of a standard neighborhood. They don't respect our neighborhoods. They leave trash around or they end up parking on the grass, as we're hearing, you know? They're not from here. So they just don't take it as like it is their own neighborhoods. You know, and, you know, I, you know, I struggle with that. You know, I expect the school to be meant for students and learning and not as a business for profit. You know, I'm really concerned with that. And I ask the council to look into this further and ask, you know, the district what it is that they're doing, you know, and how they're impacting their neighbors in the community by doing this, you know?
Ask you to wrap up your comments.
You bet. Yeah. My last concern is, you know, I asked you to take these considerations and do your decision tonight and also in future decisions regarding the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the roster is Jeff Ohm.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Ohm. I live at 10425 Johnson Avenue South. Is Lincoln Stadium, is that dead on arrival in terms of being able to use a renovation process on that particular football field? That option is closed because I'm an outlier here with regard to putting a stadium at Jefferson High School. I live on Johnson Avenue right now, been there since '84. It's, traffic-wise, it's closed. It's, traffic-wise, it's close to becoming an Indy 500 qualifying lap when people come to school and leave school. It is absolute chaos there and it's getting worse. And I think the stadium, if it does go ahead as implanted there, which I think you're basically putting a square peg into a round hole, I don't think you have the land or the area to put that stadium in and make it fit the neighborhood. Another consideration, I think property values in our neighborhood are going to go down because of the stadium if, in fact, it does go in. So all I'm asking, do your due diligence. Personally, I'd like to see things stay at Ninetieth and Penn where my son played football. I think that'd be a better fit, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the roster is Diane Stevens.
Hello. My name's Diane Stevens and I live at 10007 Little Road. Thank you for your time this evening. When I signed up to speak, I was unaware of the discretion pyramid, but I'll share my support anyways. So I am a BPS staff member and parent, and it was a huge hit to student morale and community when the middle school sports were cut. And I think stadiums at the high school grounds would boost school spirit and their connection to their community. Homecoming and other sporting events at home but not on the grounds of your high school building causes a disconnect. I would love for BPS students to have a sense of comfort and school spirit when attending athletic events that would occur at their stadiums on their school grounds. Earlier this session, Commissioners have expressed needing a place for children in Bloomington in regards to a restaurant coming soon. A functioning stadium for each of the high schools is also a place for our teenage youth to gather, create community, and support their peers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the roster is Mark Bachman.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, my name is Mark Bachman, and I've been asked to speak on behalf of the Jefferson Football Boosters. I'm new to this. Tim Carlson put all the work into this and sharing, you talked about pictures of stadiums. So I appreciate the work that's been done by him and by the boosters previous to this. I'm so impressed with what's being considered here. Being new to the school, I see an incomplete campus. The activities are happening there as have been mentioned, but it's incomplete. There's two small set of bleachers that are smaller than you'd have at a middle school band concert. So completion of what was begun in nineteen sixty-nine is due to take place. The other piece to consider that what I'm so impressed about is the impact this is going to have on all of Bloomington. My role prior to retiring, I was the Facility Director for a school district. And number one on my job was front porch because families are looking, as they drive around, deciding where they want to live at the school. If there were weeds in the cracks of my building, that was a problem because we don't care. Right now, if you look at the Jefferson Stadium, what do people think? We can increase the economy, we can increase the, or reduce the tax burden on everybody in the community if we have more people moving into the community. The stadium's going to bring people in. It's going to bring more income to the businesses in the surrounding area. And in the long run, it's going to help the infrastructure of the whole community because more people are going to want to be here instead of going to the places that Commissioner Curry mentioned in the pictures. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Catherine Babcock.
Hello, Catherine Babcock. Once again, there's a flashing colored light, T-L-C-R-G-B-W, still listed on the Thomas Jefferson Football Stadium Light Roster that is not in accord with your lighting code. That's twenty-one dash three oh one dash oh seven. Blinking, flashing, moving lights. I'm not talking about the uplighting. This is yet another light that nobody has ever discussed publicly. It's a flashing light that changes colors and rotates around, and it is in your city code that it needs to be addressed. So before you make an approval on that, it hasn't yet been looked at. Second thing I want to talk about is getting a conditional use permit and some mitigation for the Jefferson High School. One of the good reasons that we can help to mitigate light in some of the parts of the season that we're not using the stadium for school-related issues is light pollution, brightening yards, imperiling fireflies. Right in the front page of our Star Tribune today, and it talks about how fireflies are diminishing all around the country, but mainly here in Minnesota. We have small colonies of fireflies around the Kennedy Stadium. There's a few fireflies every now and then around Jefferson Stadium. These, I would just encourage you all to look at this article because it really tells you in detail how events like this, when done rightly, won't imperil these. And that's why a conditional use permit and mitigation such as trees and shrubs, following up with the goodwill of the school district not to overutilize this resource, would help the residents that have to live here. Your kids are in and out of there in four years. My family's been there seventy years, even before the high school was built. So the changes help people who are there long-term. There's a goodwill, a good way to do it, and I think that it's within everybody's power to get the school district persuaded that it would be to their best interest to have that kind of decorum with their residents. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Next is Jocelyn Brewer, maybe. Apologize if I'm misreading the handwriting.
Hi, I'm Jocelyn Beaver. I live at 10374 Rich Road. I am resident of Bloomington for the last twenty years. I'm a mom of two Bloomington students, and I'm currently the co-president of our football program. And I'm just here to, number one, just say, the permit that you're looking at is about light and sound, which you've done a great job of doing due diligence, and my understanding is it's all been met, so thank you very much. I also put together a petition afterwards, just wanting, because I got your email. My understanding is that you guys had some folks that wanted to put that petition. I just asked you to move forward without any further delays. There was five hundred and ninety-four folks that signed that, that the vast majority of whom live here and would like you to continue to move forward on behalf of these kiddos. And I just wanted to say, you know, Lincoln Stadium, Lincoln closed in nineteen eighty-two. So it's been a minute, but you guys have been ready to update this for the kids. And there's thirty-two hundred students every single year that are going to be able to use these spaces. There is endless research that shows the corollary between sports and what that does for kiddos. Amazing impact on their academics. My son, who is lacrosse student, they did very well this year. There was, I mean, they're going to say one of these two things wrong. There was nine kids that had over a four-point-oh on the team and eleven that had over a three-point-five. Impressive, and they were one of the best teams in the state. There is huge contributions of what they learn on the field and what they take out and what they contribute to society. What we have is not enough. It's time. You need to move forward. And this is somebody who, I was the first graduate in class from the Environmental Studies, School of Environmental Studies. I care about the environment. That's not what this whole situation is about. I'm very confident that you can handle this project, move forward in compliance with what is needed, and use the myriad of resources to address any issues that come up. And this is also about access. Our kids have an opportunity to walk to their games. We do not have busing. We don't have bus drivers. For them to be able to be not bused to their home games would be wonderful. We have currently, our student population, under the age of eighteen, twenty-two point-seven percent of them live in poverty, okay? We have issues with access of what is happening with these continued delays. The time is now. Please continue to move forward. And this area has always been busy. I love that you're talking about ways to, you know, address what, I live right on the Hundred and Second and Rich Road. Great. Love that you're already talking about how you're going to address this. You're ready. The kids are ready, and I appreciate you moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. The next name, I apologize if my handwriting is not great, or my reading of handwriting is not great.
Hi, Chrissy Groko, 10832 Little Avenue. And I'm here in support of the stadium. The current stadium at Jefferson is not handicapped accessible. The entrance is grass and too steep for anyone in a wheelchair or a medical scooter to get around in. There is a paved path on the one side. The current students that are in wheelchairs that try to get down to the turf or the track, frankly, are too scared to go down because it is so steep. We, two years ago, unfortunately, had one of the grandpas that came and fell down the hill because he couldn't get back up. And so we just wanted it to be a place that family and the students can come watch and be safe. When we chose Bloomington twenty years ago to live, we wanted it a place of community, of facilities for our kids. And my one daughter already graduated. My son will be a junior next year, so I want this for the future of Jefferson and the city of Bloomington. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristi Elder-Suzick. I know I got wrong.
You had it pretty good for Polish. We say it the American way, Shepcheck. Or, sorry, Suzik. Shepcheck is, all right. Thank you for allowing the community to speak on their thoughts on the stadium today. I'm Kristi Elder-Suzik. Sorry, I didn't say that. I'm reading a statement from my husband, Tom Suzik, who is the new boys' head coach for Jefferson Soccer, as he's coaching right now and couldn't make it tonight. So he wrote, "As a coach at one of the city's high schools, this has a direct impact on the program that I'm overseeing. I've played against Jefferson and Kennedy High Schools in soccer several times over the years while coaching other schools. The thing that has always stood out to me is the lack of definite atmosphere at the home stadiums. At Jefferson games, had to be played earlier in the day since there weren't lights. At both stadiums, there was a lack of spectator seating. This was shocking difference from other schools I coached at, Brooklyn Center High School and Chan-Hasten High School. Although Lincoln has the Bloomington Stadium, this location has zero feeling on actual home stadium. Field is shorter when it's lined for soccer, which changes team tactics. It's regularly torn up by the football players to no fault of their own. This has a major impact on the quality of soccer that can be played at the stadium, which is something that is different when compared to turf." Now that he's coaching at Jefferson, and we are Bloomington residents as well, he wants to voice his opinion that it is vital for the community and the sports programs to complete these updates. Although there are a few people in the community that oppose the upgrades, the vast majority of the city wants these to take place. There have been multiple delays in studies performed by the city, all with independent contractors to appease the voices of dissent. Numbers and data do not have an opinion. They are based on fact. Facts should guide our decision-making process and not opinions. The data derived from the studies indicates that the concerns voiced by the few dissenters are not valid concerns. This should be enough for us to proceed with the plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Alison Lindeman.
Good evening. My name is Alison Lindeman, and I feel as though I have a unique perspective for both stadiums. My husband and I are lifelong Bloomington residents and Kennedy alumni. We are currently raising our three children in the Jefferson Boundary Area, and I'm a teacher at Oak Grove Middle School. My husband and I made our decision to live in Bloomington because our parents still live here. I believe Mark Morrow actually was talking about my dad, who's eighty-three, coming to my son's lacrosse game on Monday night, and he has a very difficult time with the way that this stadium is, is the lack of ADA accommodations. We, my husband and I, wanted to share the same experiences that we had growing up, which includes our education and athletic experience in the Bloomington School District. At Kennedy, I played soccer and ran track, both a stadium setting. My husband also played soccer for Kennedy. Throughout the last twenty years, I coached soccer for Jefferson for eight years and currently coach middle school track for Oak Grove Middle School, which uses both Kennedy and Jefferson tracks. All three of my kids, ages eighteen, fourteen, and ten, have used both high school turf fields and tracks for our city sports, association camps, and middle school track meets. I can honestly say, I have been waiting for over twenty years for both high schools to have stadium improvements. There is nothing more powerful and impactful than school spirit and the opportunity to attend events, sports or otherwise, on your own school campus. As Kennedy alumni, some of my favorite memories are playing under the lights, having my name read over the loudspeaker, and spending time with friends watching Friday night football games. As a coach, I've been able to compare stadiums from all over the metro, small schools and large schools, most on campus and some right in the middle of their town, like Hastings. I am envious of their communities. As a parent, watching your kids be a part of their school community through various activities on campus, being able to sit in bleachers rather than standing along the fence line, and being able to hear the National Anthem before a game but not being able to hear it because the loudspeaker system doesn't exist. This shouldn't be about parking, lights, decibels, or even endangered bugs. This is about community. This is about school spirit, and this is about supporting our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the roster is Lynn Lundberg.
Hello, Lynn Lundberg, and I live at 4531 Heritage Hill Circle. I am speaking in favor of mitigation efforts to help residents who live close to the schools. So I want to start by talking about the City Council. I just listened to the City Council. I think that you were listening as well, Commissioner Albrecht. And I noticed that Commissioner, or that City Council Member Rivas mentioned that he lives really pretty close to Lincoln, and he sits in his backyard, now I'm paraphrasing him, "Sits in his backyard and the noise is really annoying," he says. "But he has a couple of drinks and it's okay." I think I paraphrase that pretty accurately. So that's a concern, right? Okay, so three things. Number one, we had two residents, well, a lot of residents, but two residents in particular who have spent an enormous amount of time researching this. And you can tell Catherine and Lindsay, they've researched this, and they brought up some really valid concerns, and I don't know that you would address those. So I'd like, if you could, after this is over, if you could address some of their concerns that they mentioned. The question about the lack of data, the question that they talked about maybe using the sound system for, during practices and things. What do you think about all of that? I'd like to see those concerns addressed. Also, I'm wondering, we talked about earlier the restaurants who have complaints triggering the, if you have three complaints that triggers, then the restaurants to maybe work on mitigation things? Why not do this for the schools? Why not have the restaurant, the residents be able to, if there's three complaints, maybe the schools need to work on some mitigation efforts? And finally, the parking issues. West Side of Olson is not really very practical. I don't know if you've been over there lately, but people don't know it exists. There's a lot of parking there, but how will they know to get there? So I would like to have you talk a little bit about how you're planning on directing the traffic over there because right now, people don't know it's there. Thanks.
Thank you. Next on the list is Jane Barnes.
I am indeed Jane Barnes, and I live at 4529 Heritage Hills Circle. Lynn and I are neighbors. I came tonight upset, and it's been really edifying to hear lots of people with their perspectives, and so you will not hear me talking about lights and noise. There are some questions left, as Lynn suggested, about the noise decibel level. I think that the lighting, there's been plenty of attention paid to that. I appreciate that. I appreciate all the thought that has gone. I appreciate all the thought that has gone into this by many, many people I know. My biggest concern is the traffic and the parking. It's... the other day, I was coming home from shopping at Cub Foods, and I'm driving down Heritage Hills Drive off of France Avenue. I made a left onto Heritage Hills Drive. I went past those apartments and condominiums we were talking about. The fields are now on your right. There were cars parked on the sidewalk, around the corner onto Johnson, all the way down Johnson, and that is a first. That hasn't happened a lot before. People are lazy. There were tons of parking spots left in the Olson Middle School lot that is right across the street from that field. People don't use it, they won't use it unless they're forced to. I'm concerned, I don't know how we get no parking signs on Heritage Hills Drive, perhaps on Johnson during games. I think that's critical. You can't pass with people parked on the street, which sometimes happens on Heritage Hills Drive, coming off of France Avenue, on the side of the fields. You can't pass two cars very easily. That's... it's a real problem. It's not... we're not making that up. People will not park on the other side of the Olson Middle School and Elementary School. As Lynn said, people don't know that's there. So, what we're left with, I'm curious to know how many spots there are available at the Olson Middle School lot that's right across the street from the fields. I don't know how many spots there are there. The only other spots left that are parking related to the school are the spots that are by the tennis courts and by the fields that exist now. There's ample parking there and around the corner on the front of the high school. The problem with that is, it's not always a problem, but it's sometimes a problem with the many other activities that go on in that building. My husband and I have lived in that spot that was mentioned that's the worst, the southwest corner behind these new fields. We live up on the hill. We raised two girls there. They are bitter human beings for having gone to Bloomington schools and for living here in this community. We love it here. I'm...
If you could please wrap up your comments.
Okay. You get the gist of it. Parking is my big deal, and I appreciate your consideration of that for those of us who live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Pat Meyer.
I'm Pat Meyer, 4531 Heritage Hills Circle, and thank you all for serving on the commission as a difficult job. I think I've got some rough idea about what you're posed with here, the question you're going to have to answer, and I really have two things. Talk a little bit about sound, because I want to understand this, and the other one is back to parking again. On the sound, the L10 level, if I understand the science behind that, I could be at 140 decibels, which is an airplane taking off for five minutes, and still meet that. Is that correct? Okay. And then, secondly, on the parking addition, everybody's right, they're not going to go over to Olson. What are you going to do? If parking becomes a huge problem, and you get... do you only take action when there's a complaint? So, you know, we go ahead and do this. Two years from now, we find out it is really a big problem. What are you going to do? Has anybody got a plan for what mitigation measures might be put in place? Step one, step two, step three? And I guess the same question goes for the noise. Is somebody going to be testing it a year from now to find out if we are in compliance? And if we're not, then what happens? Is there a plan? So, thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, and I apologize, another one of my attempts, Carter Flukas.
My name is Carter Fleishouse, and I'm a student at Jefferson High School. I play football and lacrosse, and this year, for lacrosse, we hosted... got them on a home games, and we'd walk out of the locker room, walk onto the field, and I would just see people sitting in the grass. They're not... they don't have anywhere to sit in bleachers, and I have family come into the games, and I just feel like they should be able to have a better experience, along with us as students, to be able to have a better experience. And now that we don't have Lincoln, for home football games, there's just going to be people sitting in the grass all the time. There's nowhere for them to go, and it's just not going to be a very fun experience, to be honest. So, I hope that you guys will consider building the stadium at Jefferson. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Franklin Rezak.
My name is Franklin Rezak, and I play football for Jefferson, and I also run track. But track probably won't be that big of a deal, because not a lot of people come to the meets. But football will definitely be, because a lot of people enjoy coming to meet... or to the games at Lincoln Field. Now that that's gone, we got to move on, maybe. Hopefully, we're getting a new, great stadium that lives up to the Lincoln Stadium expectation at Jefferson. And I know, along with all my other sophomore football buddies, we want to have a nice stadium to play at and have good memories there. Thank you.
Thank you. That has exhausted my list of speakers. No one else at the door has signed up. This is the... for those in the chamber, I would make a last call for anyone who'd like to speak on this item. And online, I think we're also clear? Okay. So, seeing none, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, move. Second.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second to close the public hearing discussion. Seeing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. The public hearing is closed. Before we get into discussion too much, I think I've made a few notes from the comments that we have here. I think Senior Planner Sancho, the flashing light comment, is that covered under our other lighting code requirements?
Chair Commissioners, there is some language related to flashing lights. I don't know what... how that applies offhand, but certainly something that I would be looking into.
And if it's a... if it's a code standard, it would be required to be... to be met?
Yeah. If there is modifications that are necessary, they would have to be made before permits would be issued.
There's nothing in this action tonight that would permit something that's not code compliant?
That's correct, sure.
Thank you. I think we heard a number of things about traffic, about parking. I think this body has... I know, I'm sure most of you watch every week when we meet, because it's riveting stuff. But we have talked ad nauseam about this issue in the city. Those of you who may... if any of you know me, this is actually my last meeting of six years of this body. I've talked endlessly about sidewalks, about speed limits, about shrinking our streets, about all those things. And so, I think... I know that this... what you're bringing us today, know that this is something we talk about a lot, and we are making progress. I think you've heard staff talked earlier about some of the work that's coming to 102nd with speed limits. I think staff echoed some of their frustrations, that perhaps some different people who sat in these chairs in the past have not been receptive to those ideas, you know? This group has heard me talk about, "We are a suburb that was built for the car, and we are trying to correct some of that, that we know people are still driving and people are going to drive, and we also need to live in harmony with people who walk, people who bike, people who scooter, and things like that." You know, the sad story that came out of, I think, Lakeville earlier this week is a good reminder of why we're... why we focus on some of the things we focus on. I think you'll see that in the next month, when the speed limits across the city come down by five miles an hour. I would encourage the school, again, as we talked about, with trees, shrubs, things you can do to improve the natural environment. I think I would also encourage you to look at some good... I don't know if it's sandwich board signing, if it's volunteer parents from your booster clubs out there with, you know, airplane cones or whatever, flashing people to where that parking is, because it's not obvious. And we certainly, I don't think... we do not want to introduce a new driveway from Olson onto Heritage Hills, of course. That would make it worse for the neighbors there. But we need to figure out some way to get... especially the people from out of town to know where to park. So, those are some of my comments on that. I think this is... again, this process, we've got a much improved application. I know in my time, when we've had applications that come that are, I will say, substandard initially, that they've either been improved... improved, excuse me, or the applicant has chosen to not come back. And we've seen both of those in Commissioner Goldsman in my time. And this body takes this work seriously. So, again, have a microphone one more time, and I will have chosen to use it. So, thank you for everyone who is here. This is why we have public hearings. This is why, as Commissioner Cookton has said, we are the closest people to the people of anyone in this governing process. So, I wish we had more people for some of these things. And with that, I will call for discussion. Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple questions, some follow-up based on some comments. Mr. Sancho, can you address the sound study specifically and the metrics behind the sound study?
Chair Roman, Commissioner, the acoustics firm that conducted the study, you know, they have their methodology and the data that they collected and used, both from, I think it was generally regarded methods for sound modeling. We haven't had access to the raw data, and frankly, I don't know what we would do with it if I had it, because just to... we don't have sound modeling software, and so, I wouldn't be able to evaluate whether it's valid or not, just to be totally frank. And so, it's typically... it's not something that's a code requirement to provide the modeling data behind the study, and it isn't something that we've asked for.
Thank you. Another follow-up question regarding sound, and this is more for everyone here who's listening in about... really addressing the sound. How often do you see sound studies in applications?
Chair Commissioners, so, I've been a planner for the city for 10 years, and I think there's been three, including before, if you have both of these applications. So, two studies before, Kennedy and Jefferson.
Yeah, I think that's about right. I mean, that's what I'm counting in my head as well. So, the other... so, I appreciate that additional information. My comments regarding sound, I'll echo Commissioner Cookton's response from the Kennedy application regarding, you know, we are not experts. Our planning staff is not... are not sound experts either. I believe that the data is there. I also don't know what we would do with the data if we had it. So, I think that's a good... a good remark on that as well. The comments regarding the restaurants, I know there was a comment about comparison to the two... the first two applications we had this evening. Those conditions were put into place because those restaurants were open past 10:00 PM. The requirement for the stadium, as I understand, is that games cannot go past 10:00 PM. If they were to have gone past 10:00 PM, it would be totally open to those additional conditions. However, do we have jurisdiction to do that? Probably not. However, because it's not a conditional use permit. But the... regarding mitigation, I believe that the mitigation is within the code to actually comply with the sound requirements of the city at large. My last comment related to what we heard and feedback tonight, and I really appreciate everyone being here as well, is around enforcement. We, as a group, are not enforcers. And so, as much as I'd like to say, this is what we can and we can't do, and what we can and we can't promise in terms of what the police will do, and will they ticket people who are parking on the sidewalk? I have no idea. I would hope that we would trust that our traffic engineers, our parking specialists, our police force would enforce the laws as they stand. And I would encourage neighbors to have that communication with the police force, because again, we are not the enforcement body. And going back to the comments about injurious, I don't believe that the traffic and the parking are considered injurious, and therefore, I do believe that all the findings have been made, and I am in support of this application.
Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, for this one, again, it comes down to the four findings we have, and as I was preparing for this item, which did take a long time, we put a lot of time into these things and give them a lot of thought, and I think the public can trust, just as well as I know, my fellow commissioners, they've put a lot of thought into this, and so... what I was preparing for was the code, actually, on this one. And my biggest concern with Jefferson is, I got to tell you, I think we're underparked. I believe that Olson parking is really far away, and that a lot of people aren't going to use it. And practically speaking, I think it's underparked. But we... I asked our attorney of what the legal ramifications of what is considered onsite parking, and they are within their right to consider that onsite parking. And with that, I have no ability to say anything other than, okay, I guess they're sufficiently parked. But practically speaking, yeah, I think this was more difficult than Kennedy, because the parking is not convenient, and it is like almost a half a mile walk to that west side of Olson. You know, in some ways, I think the market will support that out. If you're able-bodied and don't mind walking half a mile, you'll have a nice, easy parking spot, and you'll get home without much consternation of getting out of the parking lot. But for some people, that's not an option, and I'm always trying to think about, not myself, not what my abilities are, but the abilities of people who are aging or who do have mobility challenges. And I think having to walk a half mile to get to a football game is a struggle. So, it's disappointing that it's so far away. I wish... I don't like building parking lots, but I wish Jefferson maybe was considering that here. They're not, and they're code compliant. And so, that checkbox is checked, and you look at the other findings, and I think they're made, just like they are at Kennedy. And so, with that, I'll be supporting this application.
The things I... we heard from Director Anderson at Kennedy, that their typical attendance at football, which is the larger event, is about 500. I don't know if that number is comparable at Jefferson, or if it's higher. Director Nyberg, do you have an estimate of a number?
Chad Nyberg, Activities Director at Jefferson. I'd say the high bar on our highest football games is about 2,200.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, we would expect more cars likely at Kennedy than at Jefferson, to your point. But again, well, sorry, at Jefferson than at Kennedy, to your point. But as... also, to your point, the parameters we're allowed to look at are what they are. Other discussion. Commissioner Goldsman.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not going to add and reiterate a lot of the things that people said. I'm looking at this as, you know, when I look at injurious, is are people being safe as they come and go into that location? Look at sidewalk accessibility, and what reasonable measures can we take to mitigate any type of accident or injury as people are transporting themselves to and from? And one thing that I really appreciate that happened at the state level is that we, as a city, are now able to change our speed limits as a city. This is within the last two to three years that we actually can say, you know, we don't want people zooming through our city. We want to slow them down. We want it to be safer for pedestrians and for people that are driving as well. It's safer if you're going slower. And we're seeing that in action now, as we've heard from the engineers. Speed limits are changing here in Bloomington within the next 30 days, as well as we are starting to have school safety zones that make it so that we can be slower in those spaces. And that really applies to this application here. I would say, prior to those changes, I would have some difficulty saying, having a large group of people at night walking through these streets to get... to get to their cars across, is it Johnson Avenue, would be a concern of mine. But I think right now, this is the time we've made the changes. The changes are imminent before the next football season and before the next school season, where we will have a safer environment. I don't think it will be done. We have lots more to do, but it is safer, and we are taking those mitigations. So those are the things that I'm thinking about. And on top of all of the other comments that have been made, I really like your idea of wayfinding for residents, making it a fun, you know, here's my sandwich board, come park here for free. Things that you can do to try to get people to know that there's more space than just those neighborhood residents. So I think, as I look at this, it is meeting all of the criteria, and I will be supporting.
Further discussion. Commissioner Curry.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I mean, I definitely, I mean, I think a new football stadium would be great. Obviously voted for the Kennedy Football Stadium. But, you know, in this instance, you know, we had a resident come up in a recent meeting whose child was hit multiple times on 102nd as a crosswalk over multiple years, and nothing happened. So, I mean, I just don't think, I mean, I don't know why it takes so long for these things to happen, for these things to change. So anyways, I just think I'd be turning a blind eye if I just, if I voted for this. So, I can support it.
Further discussion. Commissioner Isa.
Sort of like we were speaking about, when it comes to our objective decision, it is based off the findings, the four findings that the Planning Commission came up with. And so my personal, or subjective take, I guess you could say more subjective take, after listening to resident concerns and people who are supportive, not supportive, is I know personally, for me growing up, going to Kennedy High School, sports did help out. And so, I know someone brought up the research behind, with the correlation between academics and sports. So I just wanted to say that, and I do think it is important to be more inclusive to our elderly and disabled community. And so, if these improvements do help with that, I'm definitely supportive. I also do understand the concerns and behind traffic and noise. And maybe potentially, we could, I'm not sure how possible this is, but in the future, come up with a, like a system that people can report that. And there could be like a task force that's assigned to that. I'm not sure how possible it is, but yeah, that's my take.
Any further discussion? Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Before any motions get rolling here, it's not my purview to really say this, but I'll reach out to and just ask the design team to consider, as people may be making a long walk to that west Olson lot, consider maybe a couple of benches or something along that path. Certainly not a condition of approval, but be thinking about the elderly among us that they may be bit off a little more than they can chew with that long walk and really need a place to sit. I wouldn't want to see them stranded on a half-mile walk. So perhaps a couple of benches could help our neighbors. And with that, I am prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In case, PL 2023-158, having been able to make the required findings, I move to approve final site and building plans for site and stadium improvements to the Jefferson High School Athletic Campus, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve final site and building plans at the subject property. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
The motion passes. This is a final decision unless an appeal is received at City Hall by 4:30 PM on June 11th. Thank you. We'll take a second if anyone, those who would like to clear out before we have approval of our minutes. We're going to skip them. We'll be done soon. No one wants to say for a minute. Since we have not too much left, I will just go ahead and proceed. Due to the uncertainty of the duration of the public hearings tonight, staff have opted to request a continuance of study item number five. So I would request a motion to continue the Streamline Development Approvals study item to June 20th. Commissioner Cookton.
Request for continuance?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to continue the item. Discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes, the item is continued. Item number six is approval of the draft meeting synopsis from May 9th. And I should verify, but I believe everyone was here at that meeting. No, Commissioner Albrecht was not. So I would entertain a motion. Commissioner, oh, sorry, Commissioner McGovern.
Before we do, I think I read that she was present and absent. Maybe my eyesight is not.
Did you arrive late for chants?
No, you were out of town.
Am I reading that right?
I see what you're saying. She appears in both the present and absent line. So I would entertain a motion with a suggested edit.
Make a motion for the suggested edit and approve it.
We have a motion to approve the draft Planning Commission synopsis from May 9th, striking Commissioner Albrecht as present.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. And the Planning Commission policy and issue update. Planning Manager Mark.
Chair Roman, Commissioners, next meeting, June 20th. We have four items on the meeting now. First of all, a public hearing on a conditional use permit for indoor recreation and entertainment use. That's at 7,700 West Old Chocopee Road. Then we have three study items on the agenda. An update on the Riverview Corridor Transit Project. Secondly, a discussion of potential single-room occupancy and co-living housing standards. And then third, the continued item from this evening, which was our second discussion on Streamline Development Approvals. Looking farther out at July 11th, so far, two items on that agenda. Public hearing on a city code amendment regarding cannabis business standards. And then a public hearing on final site and building plan revisions to convert shared space within an existing apartment building to one additional living unit. So that's what we have coming up. And I just want to recognize that this is Chair Roman's last meeting with the Planning Commission after six great years on the commission, the last two of which serving as chair, and has done an excellent job as chair. So we will definitely miss you.
Not about excellent, but serviceable. Thanks. There's probably, well, other than the seven of us, not a lot of people who would find this all that fun, but it has been fun. And I think Commissioner Goldsman and I will both be done this month after six years. And we've, and the staff who do a great job. We've seen a lot of very interesting and fascinating things over six years, and not all of which have sailed through, as we talked about tonight, I think. And so I would encourage anyone who's still left on, who's thinking about this kind of stuff, you know, we have vacancies every year, two to three vacancies every year. And you don't have to be an expert in any one of these areas. I think most of what I know I've learned from osmosis. And if you're at all curious, be involved. And I wish the rest of you who are still here, well. Anything else for the good of the order? And with that, we are adjourned until June 20th.